This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:37 PM Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex-official member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson? Here. Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Sussner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
This evening, students from Jefferson Elementary will lead us on the pledge. What you stand as you're able.
It's like the whole school.
Oh, they are singing. School song.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
White and blue, white and blue, there are colors, it is true, we're the Jaguars from Jefferson School. In our work, in our play, we are proud that we can say, we're the Jaguars from Jefferson School. We are proud of you, our colors white and blue, our school's the very best life for us, rah rah! And wherever we go, you always know, we're the Jaguars from Jefferson School. Yes, the Jaguars from Jefferson School.
Bravo!
And as the students are being photographed, parents and teachers, we thank you for your support and your ongoing commitment to public education.
One more, one more.
2.01, approval of agenda. This is an action item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, there are two changes. Item 7.04, approval of audit report. And item 707, approval of protocols have been removed from the agenda. We received late information this afternoon from our auditor that they weren't quite ready, so we will have them on the next board meeting.
Rule of approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. 3.01, school highlights. Informational item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we, tonight, we're starting a new plan, going to try to get, for every meeting, have a school come and highlight something exciting that they're doing in their site. So tonight, we've asked Levi, the principal from Fidel Middle School, and Laura Willis, the instructional coach at Fidel, to come on up and share your information with us.
Are you guys going to sing your school song while we're...
Levi can do that. Did you bring a trombone? I'll get it.
Superintendent Munoz, Chair Barlow, and all the directors, thank you for having us and being willing to start with us. Broken already, probably. We're happy to come and share what's happening at Fidel. Fidel's a very special place to all who've been there, whether it's admiring the water tower next door or wafting over the smell of Denny's. It's interesting and special in its own way, but we love it there. Converted furniture store, and some people got their driver's license. That tells part of the story of what we do to be different, to meet the needs of kids wherever they are. And one of the reasons, I believe we were asked is on the cabinet visits, they were out when we were doing our instructional rounds, so our learning for staff. And it's important to model that we're learning as well if we want the students to be engaged in that process. So we had all of our staff be a part of this, and we use some new technology that we acquired this year, some headsets. But the biggest thing, and this ties into some of our CLRT work in our district, is talking about the why, what we're doing and why we're doing it, to be more impactful for both students and our community in educating them as well as our staff. So we looked at classroom instruction. It is the most important factor if you talk about Hattie's studies of what has the biggest impact on student achievement. And so by working collaborative teams, we can learn more about effective teaching in order to support that high-quality instruction, reflect on our own practices, and you think about teams. Teams are more successful. You might have the absolute best teacher, best player on a team, but if you don't have the team around them supporting them, they're not going to be as they should or as effective for all students because we share students, especially at the secondary. So our look for is that we were looking for in this set of rounds was Envoy Gems. I know our district, and we're grateful that they have, is invested in that opportunity. Laura herself is a trained green chair coach, so she can coach on some of those things. And that's a very effective tool for student engagement in a traditional way. And the CLR protocols mesh with that in bridging the traditional items to more cultural or non-traditional ways of looking at things. So we wanted to be very intentional about looking at both things because there's a need for both, for students and our staff to be fluent. So one of the highlights for us is that, there's a word I use sometimes, everyone gets voluntold that they're doing rounds. And it's just, it gives everyone accountability that we're all in this together, we're all going to observe and go on these rounds for our learning, we're also all going to be observed for the running. And so this is, middle school's on AB day schedule, and some teachers are only there on B days or vice versa. So just a quick glimpse of our schedule of what we're doing. It was a busy, packed day. We even had a special lunch treat where everyone could go. So don't expect sloppy joes today, that was a few weeks ago. But the other highlight is, even though we've been learning for, this was the second of two days of our learning, even after school on that day, there was a scheduled visit talking about some grading for learning from one of the implementation associates. And we had staff active, engaged, even after the day of full learning, teaching and learning, and then additional learning. And that's the culture we want to set through that collective impact. If we want our students to continually learn, we need to as well. So this is a little vignette put together by Ms. Willis. One thing, if you look on the sides of teams, the coaches are always communicating. NFL coaches, or even people working behind the scenes to produce television shows and things like that, they have to communicate to be on top of things. And the nice thing about hearing that is you get this narration in your ear of what's actually happening. Because yep, you can watch it, and often you see it, you go 20 minutes later, hour later, what really happened? Did I catch that? Oh, I wish I would have noticed that in live time. Well, with these new radios and sometimes, you know, they make Ms. Willis look like Janet Jackson. She makes some dance. But it just, it allows it to have that running voice, that narration of, oh, look for this, this is about to happen. I know this lesson, this teacher's going to try this strategy. So it's not just understanding it, but seeing them in live time articulated of what CLRT strategy, what Envoy Gem is being used right in the moment. And that really did augment the immediacy of the learning. So when we're coming out for the debrief at the end of the class period, it wasn't just articulating what did I see, it was, okay, how am I going to use that moving forward? And I think Ms. Willis would agree that we saw some of the things earlier, we would go to another teacher, had been on rounds to do their learning, maybe they were on the round second hour. By fifth hour, they had changed the lesson plan, were trying to incorporate something they had already seen. And that's the greatest gift of spending and investing that time, to see it implemented to impact students right away. Just a couple pictures of us, again, in the rooms, seeing what's going on, observing cabinet members here, and we have about six to eight radios. And just, again, that communication to hear, it takes a little while to get used to, but it's definitely, I can, and I think you'll agree, because you've used it in one-to-one settings as well for direct coaching around classroom discipline, around new CLRT strategies, call and response things, it has been impactful.
And one more thing about this is, I believe that because we've had the headsets during rounds, I've seen the greatest implementation of strategies tried in the next few days since, hence up to now. So teachers are coming up to me saying, thank you for narrating, I now know what that's called, I've been implementing this strategy. As we were going through our rounds, I kept on saying to everyone, please chime in, please tell me what you see or if you have questions. And they said, we don't see it as fast as you do. So it's just getting that lens and getting our feet wet and also being able to ask questions in the moment as well. And we are strength-based instructional rounds. We've been doing it for seven years, and that means we are looking for things that we see that we are trying to implement, such as the Envoy and the CLRT. We are never a deficit model. So everybody knows and has the comfort level that we're all in this together and we're all learning.
The other part of something that we've done that ties into the CLRT is some cultural mapping of our students and staff to better know ourselves as well as the students we're impacting each day.
Cool. Keep going.
And...
So we taught the staff 16 different cultural behaviors. So at a staff meeting, we would bring up the definition of each cultural behavior. So you can see that this is communalism, where we is more important than me. So students are more invested in the success of the whole class or their group than individual accomplishments. This may look like, however, in the classroom, students being unfocused, or students worrying about everyone else and not getting to what they need to be doing.
And a part of what we did here is, we actually surveyed students as well as staff every single grade to see kind of what their strengths are, where they kind of fell within this cultural behavior. And we did some things to just really look at what percentage of students in grade six, grade seven, grade eight, and staff, what did we feel about communalism or these other things, to see how do we line up and where those gaps are. That's where we have to interject ourselves more into their culture to get them at their level, to bring them along to where we're looking for.
So we asked things such as, do you prefer eye contact? Is that a sign of respect? Or is looking down a sign of respect? Are you someone, and you can think about this yourself, are you someone that operates in precise time? Or do you have a more flexible approach to time, where it doesn't matter as much? So the interesting thing we did at a staff meeting was, we asked the staff to predict which grade level, sixth, seventh, eighth, or staff valued a certain cultural behavior. And oftentimes, the staff would say, oh, this is a sense of immediacy, that's got to be the sixth graders. Or one of the cultural behaviors is jumping in on top of each other, oh, that's got to be the eighth graders. And what we found is that oftentimes, the behaviors that perhaps irritate us while we're teaching are the behaviors that the staff exhibited the most.
Or at least they had the highest percentage on this.
And we all had a great laugh, we learned, but more importantly, we're learning about deeper cultural, deep cultural preferences and norms rather than operating on surface level. And we can use this information to leverage our teaching. So once the staff realized that, they learned more about themselves, so the staff took the survey, the students took the survey, and then I did data walls of cultural, I call them cultural mapping, and I mapped the entire school. So the entire school got a data wall like this. So this is a snippet of seventh grade. Every student has a map of 16 cultural behaviors where we can see this particular student thinks that it's a sign of respect to look down, or this student prefers learning while moving, and this student prefers learning while staying still. So by using this information, we can plan our lessons better, we actually are structuring our interventions, and we're decreasing behavior. So this is proactive PBIS, and we have blended our CLRT and our PBIS committees together. We even have PBIS committee working on the VAB approach. So when you think about the typical behaviors that stand out in a traditional classroom, sense of time, students are late, homework's not completed, sense of immediacy, blurting, talking on top of one another. So students that would stand out as not fitting into traditional culture, we are now looking at it with a new lens, and the results are amazing. Instead of heading children to a child study, we are now looking at our own personal teaching strategies, and we're realizing that we are not validating certain cultural preferences, and we need to validate all of them. Want to point out...
And so this color coding is, green would be considered more the traditional school nature, things that most teachers are looking for, expecting, wanting to teach, the BB, the build and bridge of those behaviors. And the ones that we struggle with when we're trying to lead a class are those other, the pink ones in this one. And so when we do see a pattern with a student, like maybe they've gotten a couple, whether you call them level ones or, you know, conversations, we turn back to this, what does this student need? What is this student's culture? And that very specific example is, there's a student who, everyone, new sixth grade student to Fidel, everyone knew their name probably before the first day of school because they came to summer middle school prep. And a lot of people learn their name there. And we learned that this student was almost none of what the traditional cultural behaviors were. So how do we meet this student? How do we validate and affirm them? They're a great kid, great person, validate and affirm that. Here at school, this is what we need you to do so you can learn, so you can make that difference because you are so great and so wonderful, you have a wonderful personality. Let's use it and give you those skills. And how we can also, you know, articulate this to our staff is, our students that are good at traditional school, they still need some of those non-traditional cultural things too, because if they're going to be effective members of our society, of meeting our graduate profile needs, ethical contributors. If you only know it one way, where you're sitting in a cubicle with your head down, you're not part of a group and being that ethical contributor and being able to produce wonderful things in our society. So that's why we want to be able to shift both ways for all staff and students.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead. Yep.
I think that's it.
Any questions, Mr. Munoz?
We took more than five minutes.
Well, no, I do have a brief question, though. In terms of communalism and culture, that doesn't necessarily equate into, well, more in the form of a question, does that automatically equate into linguistic considerations or ethnic considerations?
We're still building our skill set in that area. It's something we have to get better at, and it's something we're trying to be more youth cultural and ethnic focused for the students that are in our classroom. Their conversations we're having each and every day pop into a classroom today, and I had the students, you know, educate me on why they might say okay boomer to me.
Oh.
And that's a youth culture basically calling me old and washed up.
But by doing this, I think we're broadening our view of culture, and by learning more about all of these 16 different cultural preferences, it's really impacted how we teach and the lens at which we look at students, which is helping us reach more students than we have.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Board, this is exactly Superintendent Munoz, what we had hoped this opportunity would look like, allowing a principal, staff to come and celebrate what they're doing that's working well for them and the students. And I did note, you guys are called the Falcons, so go Falcons, keep up the good work. Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Next time, would you sing the school song for us? Do you have one?
We'll have to write one.
We need one.
Write one. Find a musician.
3.02, kick off to kindergarten informational item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Amy Ike, Executive Director of Community Education.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Munoz, I have two quick updates for you. One has to do with this Thursday, annual event that we put on, Community Ed sponsors and everyone collaborates across the district to invite our families who have incoming kindergartners in the fall to come and learn about our neighborhood schools, our choice schools, and then we have lots of the other services that are available to families there. So transportation, Student Nutrition Services, SAC. We also have some of our partners there, like Olmsted Medical and Mayo for flu shots and other immunizations that might be needed. So the Mayo High School cafeteria is full of tables. That will be Thursday night, 4:30 to 7:00. So we invite you to join us. Many of you I know are already staffing tables. If I might, I have the next announcement as well.
3.03, National Community Education Day, November 14th, 2019. Informational...
Amy, we'll talk about this at the end item as well?
Well, it just so happens that Thursday is also National Community Education Day. So we thought we would take a moment and just shine the light on some of the impacts that we have in our community. And I really attempted to make this mostly about the people who come and engage in our services, because that is where the impact lies. And you see a variety of age groups, variety of backgrounds, variety of abilities, all are welcome in community ed. So we'll just tell you a little bit and more for our audience, because I know you're all familiar. Our goal is really to bring people together for learning, if you really distill it down. And these are folks of, again, all backgrounds, folks that would not necessarily always come together naturally. And we do serve all ages, from literally our babies, newborns, all the way through our oldest citizens. We work with a lot of community partnerships, a lot of community organizations, on the issues that face our community. We know workforce development is an enormous issue facing this community as well as others. Community Ed works to help students all the way through develop those skills, and then works especially with adults who are looking to further their career, looking to enter the workforce, to build those skills as well. We absolutely focus on early learning as both a workforce structure, workforce development effort, as well as being ready for school, so that those students who need a high-quality experience and perhaps can't access it elsewhere can come to us. We have lots of scholarship dollars available to help students access high-quality early learning. Our youth development programs are one of the largest part of our program, from school-age childcare to after-school enrichment. You know that we have two cohorts of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant now, which brings over a million dollars into our school system to be able to open up access to all students who would be interested at our community learning centers. And as you know, in Minnesota, we have the high-value investment from our legislature to make community education part of our school districts, which helps people access the assets of our buildings and our programs that are in our communities. This is, not every state has this, so I don't know if you realize that, but we are lucky in Minnesota to have that associated. So this is just a quick snapshot of all the various programs that fall under the large umbrella that is community ed. I would just point out that we do coordinate all the requests for use of our buildings outside of the school day, as well as provide programming that we design. And earlier, you heard that one of our newest programs, PAC, or preschool age childcare, is helping to reduce some barriers to access to early childhood as well. So here you see some examples of lots of different things that we do in community ed. We try and get outdoors as often as possible to explore our environment, we know that's good for brain development. We start early, and we engage people as often as possible in learning and connecting with each other. We find that that learning together really makes strong bonds across affinity groups, across ages, and across backgrounds. So just a huge thank you goes out to all of the people that make this possible. Of course, our participants who take that risk and say, yep, I'm going to sign up, I'm going to try this new thing. All of our staff from all the various roles, from certified teachers to assistants to clerical staff who make it possible, facility reservations folks, takes a lot of people to make an operation this large. And we served about 20,000 individuals from our community last year. So when you add up all the early childhood, youth development, and that's an unduplicated number, that's not people who came to multiple, that's individuals. So you know that we're touching lives out there, and I just wanted to take a moment, thank all of the folks who are involved in that, and thank you, of course, for your support in all the ways that you support community ed.
Comments from the Board? On a personal level, I wanted to thank you for two reasons. I recently had my oldest daughter, her husband, and three kids move from Alaska to here, and she has a two-year-old, and I was really saying, you need to go down to Community Ed, and they'll direct you, and they'll just show up. And so she's going to do that. And then on the flip side, on a personal level, I recently, with the loss of my wife, you know, began to think, you know, Community Ed, they offer a number of things, and so thank you again for the things you offer for the community from preschool on up. Thank you. Director Workman.
Yeah, I really want to thank you for all your work on this. I mean, it is a huge job, but I know when I had my first child, who is now 36, you know, as a new parent, he did not come with an instruction manual.
Right.
And so those pair classes were just great. I mean, they were not just informative, but it gave me a chance to connect with other women who were in the same position. So, you know, on a personal level, I want to thank you. I mean, you weren't there then, but, you know, the whole community education and how it serves the community is wonderful.
And I pretty still know some of those people, don't you?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. 3.04, School Psychology Awareness Week. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, November 11th through the 15th is School Psychology Awareness Week. We are fortunate to have 18 school psychologists who provide services to individual students in all of our buildings. Our school psychologists provide valuable support for students and families. They collaborate with teachers to identify appropriate interventions and work with school teams to complete evaluations for special education. School psychologists are often working behind the scenes to make a difference in a student's life. We appreciate their hard work and dedication to Rochester Public Schools, so thank you to all of our school psychologists.
3.05, National Education Week. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, next week, November 18th through the 22nd is American Education Week, a good time to remember that caring teachers, education support professionals, substitute educators, and involved parents make a difference in a child's learning. Rochester Public Schools employees, nearly 3,000 individuals, together, we inspire, challenge, and empower all students. I'd like to acknowledge all of our staff and our community supporters and partners during American Education Week.
Thank you. 3.306, Above and Beyond. Mr. Munoz.
Yes. All right, it's that time of the month where we identify our above and beyond winners. We have, you see the four there. And as usual, I'm going to read two examples for you. The first one is going to Mr. Fogarty, the principal at Century High School. My son Zach, a sophomore at Century High School, was seriously injured during a varsity football game, October 4th, 2019, in New Prague, Minnesota. Throughout Zachary's time spent in St. Mary's intensive care unit, and into the time from transition back to school, Mr. Fogarty was instrumental in making accommodations necessary for Zach's return. Through Mr. Fogarty's leadership, the Century High School guidance, teaching, and coaching and nursing staff stood ready and willing to do whatever it takes to make the next step in recovering from this traumatic injury seamless. Mr. Fogarty and his staff should be recognized for going above and beyond for our family. We are truly gracious and appreciate everything that they've done, and thank you, John P. Herbert and family. Okay, and then the other one is one that I submitted. I want to recognize Rochester Public Schools' tech team for the excellent support they provide to our staff and district. Without them, we could not do what we do every day to inspire, challenge, and empower all students to reach their full potential. They play a critical role in our success. So thank you for all of them. And we do not have drawing this time.
Right, we'll add these to the December group.
Thank you. 3.7 School Board Committee Updates, Dr. Marvin.
Yes, I'd like the two representatives from the Student School Board, Koushi Kunchala and Olive Erickson, please, to give the report.
Hi, my name is Olive Erickson.
And I'm Koushi Kunchala, and we're from Kellogg Middle School.
Our new district equity coordinator, Siobhan Talber, attended the last school board meeting and introduced herself. We're excited about working with her.
Students from each building shared information about how they're meeting with the administration and student body in order to address an issue or concern at their school. They want to work on together.
We spent some time discussing a problem-solving model called Making a Plan for Making a Difference. And we talked about how important it is to create and follow a plan in order to solve a problem. Some of the steps include really understanding the problem that exists, not just assuming we know everything about it, but doing the research so we seriously understand who it's hurting and what some of the real causes are.
Then we need to formulate a goal to decide how we want things to be. So we keep focused on making things better, not just complaining.
We also discussed that if we're going, that if we're going to be successful, we need to get others involved in solving the problem, especially those people who are most closely connected to it. And we need to really listen to their perspectives. Even if our team involves some people we don't always agree with, we still need a team.
Maybe the most important thing we discussed is that we cannot jump to a solution until we have first considered lots of solutions, and analyzed each one to determine whether it's, it will really be useful and appropriate for the problem we're looking to fix. Jumping to a solution before we've done all the other work is just a bad idea.
For example, at Kellogg, we're not quite sure of the problem yet, so we're going to have listening sessions where students can come into the auditorium and talk through their concerns with us, because it's really important to us to get other students' perspectives about what's causing the problem. The next time the Kellogg Student School Board members meet, we'll all discuss the problems, and we'll have a lot more information about what's going on.
We think that if we follow this plan in our building, we can really make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank your school principal. We know she's new this year, but she's doing a great job in providing leadership. If your parents are here, we'd like to acknowledge them. Can you go ahead and stand right quick, please?
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other Board Updates? Director Workman?
Boo Fest was a success, I believe. There were a lot of parents and a lot of kids who attended. Next year, I believe it actually falls on Halloween Day, so that will maybe provide another level of excitement, which I'm not sure if we need more excitement, but that's fine. Great helpers. I'm not sure if you've figured out how much profit you've made yet. I won't announce that, but...
The, the initial estimate was somewhere around $12,000.
And this money goes to support teachers in projects that they would like to do that normally are not funded by the district grants. They fill out grant forms and submit it, and then there's a team that reviews those and then awards grants to specific proposals.
Additional Updates, Director Seelinger?
Thanks, I just wanted to share a little, share a little bit from the Impact Report from Heart of Dance. It's been in our program for a year or two. Mostly my familiarity is with Riverside students, but I believe it's in a few other buildings as well. Great organization, and I've been able to see the students dance and believe they are headed to perform someplace soon. And also, just a few comments from some of our local folks. So this program, this is from a Rochester parent. He, her son, obviously, has been truly engaged in learning how to have physical contact with others outside of football. I thought that was kind of funny. And then from our superintendent, dancing classrooms help build relationships. Learning how to collaborate with someone who may be different than us is something we need to know, even into adulthood. This program really engaged students in that type of learning and hands-on experience. So wishing success for Heart of Dance to continue in our district.
Additional Updates, Director?
Quick one. I'm the Family and Community Engagement Committee. Meets every month, and a number of us are usually able to attend that. It's an amazing opportunity for schools to report out what they're doing in their building that's specific to their students and to their community. They share, share that with each other, get great ideas. One thing that we discussed today, too, was how we can better engage with parents, including making sure that we have meetings, not just at Northrup, but going to where the communities are and asking them what they need to know. You know, what kind of information would be useful to help them with their children and help them navigate the system. So I think it's a committee with, already doing great work and with incredible potential.
Yeah, Director Workman?
Um, yes, Ms. Witchman alluded to it during her presentation of the World's Best Workforce. I had the pleasure of being a tour guide at CTEC this morning with ninth-grade students from John Marshall. And fortunately, Erin Valdez, who is the Community Schools Resource Coordinator, something like that, at John Marshall was there, and she'd been through it a number of times. But it was really fun to watch the reactions of the students as they, you know, there was a robotics class, and I think one of the things that got a lot of attention was the nursing class with all of the mannequins and all of the things that the students were learning to do in that class. So, and I had the opportunity to talk with one student who said that her mother was, worked in a, in a nursing home, I believe, and, but her brother was born prematurely, and so she was interested in becoming a nurse in the NICU unit when she got older. So, you know, these experiences really have an impact on kids.
And just one comment. I had the opportunity to attend this past week, the Special Education Advisory Council meeting, and what a wonderful opportunity for, first of all, I want to commend Carla, your staff. The directors are, they're really knowledgeable. I was very much impressed, able to observe them in a different setting than when they are presenting before the Board. But more importantly, were the parents who were able to share from their heart and their experiences, and also spoke to the value of our paraprofessionals, and how important they are. And I just think as a Board, we need to understand. I commend the Superintendent and Human Resources for considering perhaps allowing there to be more latitude and the contract considerations for the paraprofessionals. We need to attract them, recruit and retain them, and I understand the value now. So thank you. Director Nathan?
I just want to talk about two events I had the chance to attend. So on October 23rd, I volunteered at the Construct Tomorrow event that was held at the Mayo Civic Center that brought together representatives from the trades to give our students an opportunity to go to and experience hands-on, in very many hands-on ways. There were drills, there were hammers, there were welders, there was masonry, and they got to, electricians, electricians. So they really got to meet the people in those fields and really see the opportunities, the great opportunities that are available in the trades. And today, I was at the STEAM Summit at the Rochester RCTC Field House. That's put on by the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, which brings a number of businesses and organizations to give hands-on opportunities for our students. And there were a lot of students all day to experience what's available for, for them in their future, should they pursue a STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math career. So kudos to those, the Chamber and the Construct Tomorrow Organization for giving our students an opportunity to see how their work in the classroom can potentially apply to a work in a career in their future.
Director Seelinger?
I'd just like to give a shout out to ALC. I and some of my colleagues were able to attend two things recently. The opening of Cafe Connect, that they refurbished some space as a sort of coffee shop in their building that they can use for a multipurpose space. Lovely space, a lot of good energy, a lot of partnership went into putting it together. And I think that it's, it's going to be a great asset to the ALC. Also, last week, we, some of us were able to see some student art there, done in conjunction with a grant they received. So there is a, this was the first of three or four artists in residence. This was Mary Beth Mag, Magyar sculptures. Most of those now live in the Skyway downtown, and so I encourage you, if you are walking downtown, to take a look at those. They're really quite amazing. Student art that we don't always get to see, especially three-dimensional. So we appreciated those opportunities.
Well, if I could just briefly piggyback on that, it was metal sculpture. And one of the things that was so great about it is that the students had a story for why they created what they created. And so many of them said that this art thing was something that was really cool. And a number of them said, and welding is really cool, too. So they're looking at pursuing a career in welding, or art, or both.
The art of welding.
Yeah.
Consent Agenda, this is an action item. Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration? Director Workman?
Um, yes, 4.05 and 4.06, I just have a few questions.
Motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Um, sure. I think in light of some intense discussion we had with the lacrosse team earlier, I think it would be helpful to review how these cooperatives are, are formed, how many students from other communities are in them. I believe we have the girls, Alpineski has one student, and how many students would John Marshall need to have in order to have their own team without it being a cooperative, and how long we've had a cooperative. So I know those are just a whole lot of general questions, but I think a review of that would be helpful. And also, you know, how are the expenses allocated? Does the district pay for everything, or do the teams from the other communities contribute to the cost?
I'll try to answer as many as I can, and then I may call for backup from Mark. But this is, we currently have the co-op, and we were contacted by two other districts who wanted to join the current co-op that we have. And this is a perfect example of why you do co-ops. We had a very few students at John Marshall. They didn't have enough to do their own teams, so we co-op to provide our students that opportunity, which is much different than the lacrosse, because we, at the time, we had enough for our own team and didn't really need to co-op any longer. But, so we co-op to, to provide that opportunity for students. At this time, there's only one John Marshall student that we're aware of that plans to participate. But since two schools asked to join, we had to end the current existing co-op and add the new one to, add the new team. As far as the cost, even though they're, we are, I guess I would say, the host co-op team, so all of the participation fees that the students have to pay to participate go to us to cover expenses that, that we have.
So, so Rochester then would retain control of who the coach is and all of that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Because we're the ones that are hosting the co-op.
Yeah, it's, since we are the host of it, we, we, it's really our team, and they're just helping us fill it, build the team.
And the other thing that I think that you said that we really need to emphasize is that the administrators of those districts were the ones who approached us to be part of the co-op. I think that's an important reminder for how these co-ops are formed.
Right.
So, thank you for that.
Is there a motion?
Move Approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Munoz?
Yes, we do have two retirements we'd like to acknowledge. First one is Linda Anderson, teacher for the Learning Disabled at Riverside Elementary. Retirement effective at the end of the day, December 23rd, 2019. And she has been with the district 20 years. And then we, paraprofessional, we have Rita Weasley, Special Education Paraprofessional at Rochester Alternative Learning Center. Retirement affected end of the day, October 24th, 2019. And she's been with the district four years. We want to thank both those individuals for their service to our district.
5.01 Equity Update informational item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Julie Rusick, Coordinator, Family Engagement and Community Partnerships, and then she is going to introduce our Equity A Team. So come on out.
Always getting serious.
That's a spaghetti mess down there.
Well, good evening. Uh, thank you so much for having us tonight. As you may have noticed, we've grown since last year. I think we were here last year at the beginning of the school year to talk a little bit about our work. And since then, we've added some new members to our team. And I'll speak for everyone involved. We are thrilled to have such, as Mr. Munoz called it, an A-team, working for the students in, and families in Rochester Public Schools. I'm gonna, the, the majority of the talking tonight happens down, down the row from me, but I would be remiss if I, if I didn't thank these individuals for their work that they've put in already this school year. We have had two additions to our Equity Specialists. Martine Haglund accepted a position, an administrative position at John Adams Middle School this year. So we had an open Equity Specialist position earlier this year. And I did a little bit of begging, because we had two very outstanding final candidates, and they're both sitting here today. So thank you to all involved in helping us with that decision. It's so good for our kids to have role models and more people out in buildings and visible working with our students and building those solid relationships. So we have added them to our team, and we have also added a new Native American liaison, Regan Holm Cluver, who may or may not have been, her husband may or may not have been a past student of mine. We won't talk about that tonight. Has accepted the Native American liaison position. And truly, everyone sitting here has done more work in the last three months than I probably have in my career. So I'm excited for them to share with you some of the things that we've been working on as a team this year, and where we hope to go from here. So thank you very much for having us.
All righty. Good evening, Chair, Superintendent, Board, Cabinet. I'm going to speak to one of our goals, which is, is on transitioning. Our, we have a goal, a team goal for helping students transition from, from elementary to middle, middle to high school, and high school beyond. That's a goal that, that we set... That's a goal that we set, because we felt that it was important to help students in that transition, because a lot of times, a lot of our students tend to have struggles when it comes to transitioning from one school to the next. And one thing that we're actually going to do, which is going to be exciting, on December the 5th, we're having a family engagement at Franklin, in which we're going to have a panel discussion with our middle schoolers, and they're going to talk with 4th and 5th graders about the transition over to middle school. And we're going to have food, of course, and we're going to have a lot of fun with that. So, I'm really excited about that. Once again, thank you guys for having us, and I'll pass it down to the rest of the team.
I think maybe it'll make sense, just for the other Equity Specialists, to talk about their goals for the rest of the year, and then I'll talk about Coordinator of Equity.
I think I speak loud enough. Toby Taylor, Equity Specialist for the district. My work with the Sentry Feeders, something that we're doing, and I'm doing, focused on this year still, the college trips. We just came from a college trip on Friday, where we did a dual college trip, which was really well-done. We went to Winona State and Viterbo University. Never visited Viterbo, this was our first time ever going there. Very impressed with the school. It's someplace now that I would want to actually send my daughters to that school. I was that impressed with that visit. Also, very impressed with the Equity Team this year, with the amount of support that we had. We took 25 kids and have five adults present. Never been done before. So thrilled to have a real team to help with these endeavors. So, the kids had a great time. We had kids that was interested in Viterbo, kids that was interested in Winona State. Also, we already visited the University of Minnesota, and then this coming, well, actually, next Friday, we'll visit St. Cloud State University. So, we continue to put on the college trips. We have more and more kids that are interested in going, even in some of the things that I'm doing after school, or we're doing after school. We're also making the kids aware of these opportunities to go on the college trips. Also, the last thing, I'm also talking to more kids about historical Black colleges this year. You can see the kids' eyes light up when you talk to them about an HBCU. Unfortunately, a lot of kids don't know about what those four letters even stand for. It's not talked about as much anymore. Zelda Collins-Moore, who used to be employee here, she used to talk about it a lot when she was employed here. I feel like it's my job to make sure I let kids know about it, and as I do let kids know about it, some kids have already filled out college applications for HBCUs now. And I'm hoping that in the future, we can work together as a team and start taking some kids to those particular colleges as well.
Hi, how's it going? One thing we noticed when we all got together was, we might not have been on the same page with Skyward Access. And we, once we all got together, we realized, we need someone to come see that we're all not on the same page. So, once we had someone come in and show us all, I think it's been a big help, because one of the things with our kids, they're very visual learners, and it's one thing to say, "You're missing class," or "You're not doing well." But if you're able to print it out, put it side-by-side, and being with someone you can trust, this is looking out for your best interest, not saying no one is, but sometimes that's just how they feel. When they see that side-by-side, it really hits home. And I would say, in the last week now that we are all on the same page and we have everything, I've seen a huge difference. And with a lot of my kids last week, I'm saying, "This is what it looks like first quarter. Now that you can see this, two weeks into the second quarter, let's print it out again, and we can see how much better we're doing." So, I think us all having better access to Skyward was a huge thing for all of us.
Bujo Anin. As Julie had said, my name is Regan Holm, Regan Cluver. Very grateful to be here. Before I start talking about a couple of projects that we've been working on so far this year, it's Native American Heritage Month, so I would like to take a quick moment to acknowledge that we are in Dakota land. MiGwetch, thank you. One thing that we have started already this year is Wanzitios Pay, which is Dakota for one extended family. This is a positive space for Native American families and students to get together, make ribbon skirts, we're hoping soon ribbon shirts, learn language, read books, play Indigenous board game card games, and just hang out with other families, which is really great. We do have a lot of students in the district, which is a lot of fun. The excitement with this is, we do have elders in the broader Native American community up near the cities up north that have reached out, given me a couple phone calls to talk about the success of this and that the word is spreading. So, that is very exciting, only being a couple months into that. A couple projects that are still in the works that we're planning on doing, working in collaboration with the overseers of the 21st Century Schools. We're planning a decolonizing the Native Diet Night, and really taking back that portion of our identity, and getting back to our Indigenous foods and our health, and putting that first, and what that would look like. So, we're very excited for that. And finally, working with the Equity Specialists, as well as 21st Century, getting an essay-writing night for our students who have been through quite a bit, and, you know, getting those essay scholarships is really important, and figuring out what that would look like. So, working with English teachers in the district, as well as some counselors and ourselves, we're really looking forward to what that could look like come spring. So, that's just a few things, looking forward to more. MiGwetch, thank you.
Julie, did you want to? You didn't want to say anything?
Well, I think, I'll say one quick thing. I think Mr. Munoz has already talked a little bit about the addition of the fourth Equity Specialist, and that would be Billy. And we did a deep dive into our data that supports where we would place him. So, when we were looking at, how could we best use Billy and his skills and abilities, and how does it match with where our greatest need is? We found that placing him at our three traditional middle schools, Kellogg, Willow Creek, and John Adams, was the best fit. So, that's where Billy is ping-ponging back and forth from right now, and he's going to talk a little bit more about what that is looking like right now, and then what we envision it to be for the rest of the school year.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Billy Brown, I'm very excited to be here and to be a part of this awesome team. I feel really supported by you guys, and everything is going very well. So, I just kind of want to talk about my role as the fourth Equity Specialist. So, first, I will be gathering data, attendance, academics, behavior for Level 2 write-ups or referrals. I will share that data with the other Equity Specialists, and then I'll go into those three middle schools, work with the principals and teachers, and pulling out small cohorts of youth or students, doing one-on-one and group work to help assist and support the teachers to keep these kids in the classrooms, and possibly, and hopefully, will lower the behavior issues. Also, I will be working with the Family Engagement Team also, so.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Siobhan Talbert, and I am the new Coordinator of Equity. So, I've been here for almost a month now, and my biggest goal has been to visit all of the sites. I'm almost there. I have a couple more to go, but just really taking a tour, getting to know the lead principals and their administration, and just talking about the building. Every building is so different, the culture, student culture, staff culture, and just really talking about some of the past and present Equity efforts, some opportunities for growth, and how I might be able to help in my role. I've since, we've had one meeting for the District Equity Leadership Team, so really trying to figure out, what do we want that to look like? And really planning for this 2019, 2020 school year and beyond. And then, the kind of overarching aerial view of my role is to connect all of the different things that we're doing in our department, Equity efforts, and just really figuring out, as a system, where are we trying to go when we think about Equity here at RPS? So, I'm just really excited to be here, to kind of absorb and learn, and everyone's been so great. This team is amazing. CNI is amazing. That's where my office is housed, so this is really just a time for me to learn a lot about the district, and see where I can start to plan and grow.
Superintendent Munoz, if you wouldn't mind sharing with the Board and community, because really, while we have a team, it's only increased by two. And could you perhaps understand if there were a budgetary impact and expansion, and how that was accomplished if there were not?
Yeah, if you remember, last year we had, Afalavi was in a principal and special assignment role, and part of his role was Equity work, and he was also our discipline supervisor. Once he left and took a principal position in the Twin Cities area, just like any time we have an opening, we reassess, and do we want to replace it first, or do we want to look at using that funding differently? And that's exactly what we did. After hiring the Director of Equity, we still had some, a few funds left over. So, when Julie came to me and says, "I have two rock stars and can't choose one," I said, "Aight, we'll do them both." So, we hired them both. And, you know, I, when I, when we first started the Equity Specialist, I mistakenly, I'll admit, a mistake, I thought I could supervise them, and I did not provide them a lot of support. My schedule just didn't allow that to happen. And I think that the support that they're getting now under Julie is amazing. And when I said, "This is an A-Team," this is, not that I'm criticizing the previous people we have, but I'm really impressed with the group that we have now. I'm well-aware of what skill sets you bring to the system, and well-aware of what you've done already in a short period of time, and it's very impressive. And I'm looking forward to all the wonderful things that this group of people is going to do for our students and for our families.
And just one question I had of Mr. Brown. I'm glad to hear that you've been tasked, or that it's on the radar, to address the PBI, the referrals, and that you're embracing that fully. I also wonder, though, as a team, in terms of the gap, can you speak to how perhaps as a team, you might be working towards impacting the current, well, students of color, and more specifically, African-Americans tend to be at that high deficit area? And will the, will your team be able to provide any supports and/or services to potentially address or help offset that?
Everybody's fighting over it.
Short answer is yes. The long answer is, that's exactly how we designed Billy's position, was to address that disparity, and to really focus in on starting with a smaller cohort of students, with a very well-rounded plan to work not only with the students, and start using a variety of student data points to have some conversations. In, I think Rodney said it best, a very trusting relationship to talk to students about, "Okay, this is what your data looks like today. This is what's happening. Let's talk about that. Let's understand, you know, what's going on." And so, in combination with working together as a team, we will continue to have the three Equity Specialists at the three, that serve the three feeder systems. Billy is that added support at the middle schools, where they can work collaboratively, either have groups together, have one-on-one groups, and have a little bit more flexibility at those middle school sites, to have some of those really important conversations with students and families. But one thing we talked about that we really are excited to move forward with is coming back and talking to staff and teachers and administrators about, "How can we better support you? What else do you need?" We've had a lot of training, but now how do we have conversations that are personal, local, and immediate, about students that may be in your classroom, or students that we're encountering at school? So, not only working with the students and families, but also kind of bringing it full circle and coming back to staff that might need some additional support, administrators that might need some additional support, and utilizing the resources that sit right here to say, "How can I help you? How can we bridge that gap?" And really start to hopefully see some closure of that gap.
Director Nathan?
I think, in addition to the achievement gap, we also hear about the opportunity gap, and I'm very excited to hear about some of this additional programming that you all are offering to give some of our students opportunities that they might not ordinarily have. And I'm hoping Superintendent Munoz will allow our Equity Specialists and Equity Leadership Team to come back and tell us how some of those programs might reflect additional resources that perhaps need to be provided district-wide, or other ways that other community partners can help you provide those opportunities for our students. So, thank you.
Absolutely. I just wanted to add on to what Julie had said. A part of my role, too, would also be supplementing some of our professional development. So, thinking about, not only through the lens of CLRT and culture, but thinking about race. So, how do we talk about race? How do we talk about bias and stereotypes and microaggressions, and also additionally restorative practices, repairing harm when we see the disproportionality that exists for our Black students and other students of color? How are we addressing that? How are we continuing to build community and relationships, so that focus is on the reparations and not necessarily just that punishment lens? So, really making sure that those other opportunities for that learning for staff are there. So, I'm excited about those two things as well in my role.
Director Workman, then Selinger.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but how many more Equity Specialists do we need? Not that you're not doing a job, but, I mean, it seems to me like there's so much work, and you're wonderful at what you're doing, but I think we probably need more people. Maybe I'm wrong, because we have rock stars, all of you, but I think that would be, once again, as the Board is looking to the budget, you know, to really say, "This is what we need for the success and achievement of our students."
I can speak to it, and then I'll let Julie. You know, when I, when we're talking about the gap, Chair, what I've noticing, you know, each year, the trust factor with administration and staff with us, and their willingness to work alongside of us and ask those tough questions, and in order for them, for us all to be able to do a better job at supporting our kids. Because I think, a lot of times, what ended up happening with a lot of our kids is, is just a lack of understanding, you know, of cultural norms. Sometimes we mix ethnicity with culture, and that's the biggest mistake, a lot of times, that we make. But the great thing about it is, when we're having these opportunities, and a lot of my schools and their schools as well, like having restorative circles with staff, and staff is able to open up about areas where they may be struggling at, and we can talk about it together and work through it. But yet, during that time, it also builds relationships with us, so that they know that they can always come and talk to me where they're struggling at as well. And I can do the same, when, so that I can become better in my profession. And to go on about the need for more Equity Specialists, I would say yes, simply because of the fact that, like you said, there's only one, two, three, four of us, and we have roughly seven to eight schools apiece. And we want to do the best job that we can, because the students deserve it. So, I think the more support that we can have, and the mass of a team to be able to do the work here in Rochester, I think the better off we'll be in the future. As we continue to grow, I think that we need to grow our team as well.
Director Selinger.
I just want to thank you all for being here. MiGwetch. I'm really excited to see, to see this team come before us. We know that this is a relatively new phenomenon for us, maybe not in other places. I love hearing about the difference of, the different activities that you've taken on, working really closely with a student, that differentiation, that making that personal contact, the opportunities you've given Toby, I've heard of over the years. And I really want to commend you, because when I think about the work that you must have to do, and I don't know it all, you know, I see the have to do, and I don't know it all, you know, I see the deep and wide, right? Because you're, you're, you're working so deeply and closely with maybe a student or a family, but I know you also have to work in a system, and I know you all have to work together. And so I'm really feeling thankful and excited that the skills that you're bringing forward are going to, are going to bring great success to this team and, but by virtue of that, to our students and our families. And, you know, this is work that, you know, we simply were not able to do several years ago. And so I appreciate that administration superintendent board, that, you know, that we are here and supporting you and your work. And we just, I just feel so grateful.
And you guys truly are the A-team. Yet, before you take your seats, quick question. You made reference, Billy, to Skyward. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Robert. Rodney. I'm sorry. We, as a board, recently have been made more aware of terms and systems like Panorama, SEL, or these things that you guys will be having access to and incorporating within the equity work. Well, I guess by the nodding of the heads, yes, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. And the Chair will entertain a motion to take a recess for, we are reconvening at 6:58 p.m. moving on to 5.02, approval of research proposal, the effects social-emotional learning has on students, self-regulation skills, and on-task behavior. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes. I think I'll have, yes, Brenda, Executive Director, curriculum instruction, will invite her group up.
We have a school board policy, let researcher come forward. We've had an opportunity to review all of the paperwork, and tonight the researcher and a small team are here to just give you a brief overview and answer any questions that you might have. So if you guys want to come forward, I'll let you introduce yourselves and present your proposal.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Wendy Mortson. I'm the principal at Falwell Elementary School. With me this evening, I am supporting Sarah Abolt. She is currently a special education teacher within our building and for Rochester Public Schools. And other support that we have here with us, Becky Robinson is instructional coach at Falwell as a point two, and also has a lead position with the district supporting the Student Support Services Department. And what is your actual title? Is it?
Hi, I'm Melissa Dankin, Assistant Director of Special Education for the elementary.
All right.
And my name is Sarah, like Wendy had introduced me. I'm going back to get my master's in special education through the University of St. Mary's. That kind of, the question was stated, but the, my question is, the effects social-emotional learning curriculum has on students' self-regulation strategies and skills. The study is completely voluntary. It would be, I would ask students that are on my case, what I'm thinking around seven or so. All those students have IEPs and goals related to the social-emotional development. All students are currently receiving a 30 minutes of social-emotional skills. The students will be asked to fill out a daily point sheet that we will, I will track to see different times throughout the day, the morning, lunch and recess, and afternoon time, and specials, just to see things I was looking for, like their body control, respectful, following directions. And then also the students could opt out at any time if they think they would want to. The curriculum that I would use would be the Zones of Regulation, Superflex, Second Step, and other pertinent social skills resources. I'll be supplementing, not supplanting, what is happening in the general education classroom. I'm not planning on publishing my findings or any of that kind of stuff. I would probably share with my coach and my principal.
Do you have any questions about this project?
Just real quick, one, is Zones of Regulation, is that a curriculum that's being used now? Or is that something you would bring in?
It's being used now.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? This is a briefing item. What type of timeframe are you operating off of?
It is a time-sensitive matter.
Yep.
If to action?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for moving that to action. I'm sorry, Rodney.
Don't thank us yet.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was waiting for the signal.
We have to vote.
Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the research study, the effects social-emotional learning has on students' self-regulation skills and on-task behavior.
Will approval. Second.
Discussion.
One question. Will we be able to see the results of the study in any way?
I can share it. We, I can definitely do that.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
My apologies for breaking that protocol. Thank you for your, thank you for moving to action.
5.03, approval of the 2020-2021 course offering changes. Briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes. Brenda Whitman, Executive Director, curriculum instruction, will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening again. I didn't bring the entire, I don't know, 80-page document with me to approve. We just asked you to approve the new things, and you have seen them. There are multiple changes and some courses added. The changes, we do have many new courses that will now be offered concurrently, which means that students will get high school and college credit. Not all of those classes are offered at every high school, with the exception of English 1118. And we already have English 1117, like English 1, and now we'll have English 2 at all of the colleges, or all of the high schools, I'm sorry. And then the courses added, the greenhouse plant production, I'm just going to read you a little bit of this. Surround yourself with beautiful flowers in the dead of a Minnesota winter. In this class, you will learn about greenhouse operations, plant production, and identification, disease prevention, pest management, it goes on and on. But who wouldn't want to sign up for that? It's another great pathway for our kids to get started. And it's a hybrid class, so it'll be part at CTEC and part at Sargent's Nursery. So that's something that we're excited about. And then the English 4, Professional Literacy at CTEC. This is something that we're doing to break down those walls of letting kids be able to take more while at CTEC. Because it can be hard for kids to give up two hours to take a course. But if we have an English teacher pushing in to some of those courses, they can be earning the credit in the CTE course and English. So we're going to get started with that. Yep?
Just a quick question. It's written as a professional literacy coach will be teaching that. Is that an English teacher?
Yes, it'll have to be because of licensure and honoring, awarding credit.
Thank you.
And then the ethnic studies course, we are really hoping that we get enough students to take that course. I mean, all of these are dependent on enrollment, right? Like every other course. But we really developed that after listening to our students' voice and telling us that they wanted more of that. They told us that our social studies is very Eurocentric. And Tucker, who I think I saw, proposed that course, and we're really hoping, hoping to run that. It's at the ALC now, and we're hoping to expand that. And I know there was a question about ukulele. You might wonder, why are we offering ukulele? Well, our music teachers, as part of the music articulation process, they decided that they wanted to offer a music elective. We don't have any music electives. So they surveyed and got 1,008 responses. 756 of those students were not currently in a large ensemble. 361 indicated an interest in a music elective, and 223 indicated that their top choice was guitar or ukulele. So that's what the teachers proposed. So, I mean, it would be an increase in music staffing if that course runs. But we are unusual in that we don't have music electives. And so it's a, you know, like different instruments like that, other than the big.
Traditional.
Yeah, the traditional stuff. So then the course removals are explained there, and we are missing the McKinstry Engineering apprenticeship, but we don't, no longer have that partnership. So a lot of work goes into that course guide, and we are ready to print that. And we'll start registration, start talking to kids about courses in December, and start registering in earnest in January.
Director Philmsen.
No shout-out for data science.
But it's going to be pretty awesome. Computer science at, at CTEC, that'll be at CTEC. Python, I'm not really sure what that is, but I'm sure somebody does. John Bartus.
It's a very modern, heavily-used industrial.
Great.
programming language.
Great.
Director Nathan.
Are any of the courses that we've added going to count for graduation requirements other than electives?
Oh, that is such a good question. I mean, the English certainly would. I will look into that. I want to make sure I'm giving you the correct answer. I will look into that and get back to you.
And when do you anticipate, like, what year would that ethnic studies course be most appropriate? Is it, I mean, is it something freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors could enroll in? Or is there prerequisites?
I, not that I want to put him, I don't know. Do you know that, Tucker?
Typically, 10 through 12.
So not a ninth grader, but 10 through 12. Thank you.
Director Workman.
I have a question, just the way this whole thing is written. We have a recommendation that we approve the changes in the course registration guide, but then the resolution is for the entire thing? So that would be these additional courses plus what we already have?
What has been approved in years past. Yep. These are the only changes.
Oh, I had one other question, too. Do we have any idea about how much additional staffing might cost for this, for all of these? I mean, I realize it's based on enrollment, and if a student is taking this class, then they're not taking another class. But do you anticipate a cost increase in staffing?
I mean, usually it's a shift.
Right.
If they're taking more of this, then they're taking less of this.
Of something else. Okay. So you think it would be more cost-neutral?
Well, Director, I'm sorry, Brenda, those decisions, and we had lengthy opportunities
this past year when we dealt with the course offerings at different schools. And if I recall, I think we were made aware that principals along with staff, they look at their enrollments, they look at the course selections, and decisions are made based on staffing and allocation based on that, correct?
Right. This is just, you know, a proposal. We're putting it out there. We're not committing anything to staffing. Depends on enrollment.
Director Nathan.
So having recently no longer been a high school parent, but having gone through the registration process multiple years and worked with other parents, and it's come up in a few of our conversations about courses that are being offered and non-offered. The question we get a lot is, when I look at this course registration guide, it's amazing. Look at all these opportunities. And students sign up, and then they find out that the course isn't going to be offered. Is there any way to track, like, over time? Some of these courses have been in our course guide for a very long time, but maybe we haven't run them every year because of fluctuations in enrollment. There seems to be an ebb and flow in interest in some courses, and I think it's reflected in the changes we make every year. But is there some way so that someone can look at a course guide and say, yep, this course has been offered, you know, five of the, you know, four of the five, four of the last five years? To give them a sense of, do I really want to put my eggs in this basket? Or do I want to choose a course that I think I might have a better chance of existing?
Are you proposing that we would put that in the guide somehow?
Or have it as a, have it as a resource, maybe, that people could look online before they go into the registration process to say, yeah, this is a course maybe I can count on versus one that maybe I should plan a different pathway? I don't know. That's just a question we've gotten a lot from, from parents and students.
Well, one change that we've made this year is, in front of every new subject, it says, courses will only run if enrollment is warranted. I don't know how we, it's all over the guide. And, I mean, I think that's a good improvement because before, if it was in there, it was so buried, we couldn't find it. So, and I think when people go to the ninth grade open house nights, the principals are real forthcoming about that, too. So I think that's an overall improvement because you can't flip through that anymore without seeing that multiple times.
Right. That's a good message.
And, and when courses don't run for a long time, I mean, that's why we have, I meet with the registrars monthly. So the registrar principals, and then the counselors from all the high schools, and, you know, they'll say, oh, that one hasn't run forever. Let's just take that out of there. So I think otherwise, you know, and, and they're in there for all three schools. And we've toyed with the idea of, do we make a guide for, a separate guide for each school? Because then it would be a little bit thinner, but then we just think of the capacity of, you know, and that could be confusing, too. So it's a good point, but I'm hoping that that large banner, many places, that this will only run if we have sufficient enrollment will help.
So if somebody would have that question, you're saying that that's actually something you track?
Well, I would say not to the, to the extent that you're requesting, because it would take a lot of work to do that. I mean, I think just counselors know from courses around, they remember. I would hate to count on that being 100% accurate, but they kind of know which course is traditionally filled. Director Workman.
Just to give you an example, a number of years ago, a lot of number of years ago, we offered music theory. And maybe four or five students would enroll in it, and then so, of course, it didn't run. And this just went on and on and on. And so finally, I mean, I think the music teachers, the high school music teachers, we got together and said, you know, this shouldn't even really be on the books anymore. But occasionally a student would want to be, you know, learn more about music theory. And then they did an independent study. I know Mr. Lundak, when he was at Centry, had a couple of students like that to, you know, to meet what they actually wanted, but not running the class, so.
And every other year, we do have every department take a look at their section to make that recommendation. I'm just remembering that now. We didn't do it this year, but we did it last year. I mean, it's quite the undertaking for, to ask everybody to come together and look at it. But we do that to try to keep it clean and concise.
So it sounds to me as if you are aware, CNI is aware of the need to have, within the course regulation guide, that information, these courses are contingent upon enrollment. And so as board members, should we be asked by parents or individuals in the community? I think we now know what to say to them, and we can all be on the same accord, if you will. Were there additional questions? Director Martin.
Just wondering, when do students register? And do you need this approved right now?
That would be good.
Soon and yes?
Yes, soon and yes. And because it, we do run some paper guides, and it just takes a while to get it electronically all set to go, too. And like I said, we do want to start marketing in December so that students, it kind of, depends on the school, but it's late, mid to late January into February they register.
I think you moved to action.
Discussion.
I want to also give you an opportunity to say that again about where these registration guides will be available to students and parents, primarily online.
Primarily online, yes. And there will be some paper copies at every building. And we really encourage people, especially of ninth graders, to go to that, you know, the Panther night, the Spartan night, because they get a lot of great information there. And, you know, it's one thing to read that big, long guide, but to have somebody explain it. And then there are people there, representatives from every department at those nights. So what a great way to ask your questions of teachers who are actually teaching the courses.
Additional questions?
We're moving this to action, right?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the 2020-2021 Course Registration Guide for grades nine through 12.
Thank you.
Will approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 7.01, approval of ICA Arena rental for the city of Rochester and Graham Arena. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
At this time, I'm going to call Mark Queasley, Century Activity Structure, to brief us on this agenda item. Good evening, Chair Barlow.
Good evening Chair Barlow, board members, Mr. Munoz, Ms. Edgar. Before you is the briefing item on our yearly ice rental for Rochester Public Schools for the boys and girls hockey programs, our boys programs, um, and our varsity girls program, uh, rent an hour and a quarter of ice time and our junior varsity rent an hour of ice time on a daily basis for practice. And as you can see, we are looking at no increase from the city of Rochester, um, in their two fiscal periods, one ends up in January, excuse me, December thirty first, and their other fiscal period starts January one of twenty twenty. So the numbers are listed there of our anticipated rental for the year.
Were there, do you have questions of Mr., of the proposal before you?
Move to action. Second.
Discussion.
Just one question, Mark. How much of that, the rental, does the district make back from ticket sales and stuff from hockey?
Well, our ticket sales, um, go directly back into the general fund. So this is a levy, uh, for the actual rental itself. So on a yearly basis, uh, our students pay two hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, in a participation fee, um, and you take that times thirty-five, boys hockey players at each one of the three high schools and about fifteen girls hockey players. So that's some of the revenue that comes back to it. Our ticket sales really are dependent on how good the program is on that given year. And so that goes up and down quite a bit. So, um, I'd hate to give you a solid number on that consistency, but there is revenue that comes back from those programs.
Director Orkman.
So how has the participation rate changed recently? I mean, say over the last five years? I'm not expecting you to pull numbers out of a hat.
Thank you.
But I mean, is, is it pretty, is it growing a lot? Is it staying pretty constant? Is it?
I would say our boys hockey participation is down some and it's across Minnesota as well. Girls hockey is down quite a bit throughout the state of Minnesota. Um, we were running with programs of about twenty to twenty-four girls per program. And I think Jeff told me the other day, Mayo is at about twenty or twenty-two?
Twenty, one goalie and nineteen skaters.
Okay, so twenty, we're at fourteen, thirteen participants and one goalie. And JM is at about the same thing, fourteen participants and one goalie or two goalies. So the girls numbers are down, um, quite a bit. But that's not unique to just Rochester, it's across the state. There's many schools that are in the same situation we are.
I'm going to intentionally share my ignorance. How many do you need to field a team?
Well, on a girl's side, it's a little bit easier because it's not a, it's not easier. That's a wrong term. In the girls program, there's less contact than in the boys. And so you can usually get by with about twelve to thirteen participants on the girl's side. Boys to run a varsity, you probably should be in that twenty to twenty-two range, just because of the program. And the length of season has an impact on it too.
Additional questions? Motion on the floor to move to action, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independence, Good District 535, does hereby approve the rental of ice arenas for the district's athletic ice hockey program from the city of Rochester and Graham Arena at a total estimated annual cost of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars to be funded by the athletic billing rental budget allocations for each high school.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Queasley. Uh, advertising agreements, briefing item, seven point zero two, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Queasley will brief us on this agenda item as well.
We've had a good fall, uh, here with Rochester Public Schools with bringing some advertisement opportunities to Rochester Public Schools. As you know, we advertise in our gymnasiums and stadiums and stadium fencing. And before you this evening is, uh, two more advertisers that have come forward. Rocket Restaurant actually was in the gym at John Marshall. They have a new restaurant coming online and so they wanted to change their advertisement panel. And, uh, so they've, um, requested a new three-year agreement. And then Black's Automotive Service would like to go one year on the new price point before they decide whether they want to go long-term. And so at the time, I felt we wanted to take advantage of offering that. Their panel is up on the, um, gym are ready at John Marshall, uh, their advertisement panel. And so to continue that for one year, what they look at, whether they want to do this long-term or not, again, would be good. They just finished, uh, Black's Auto, a three-year agreement with us.
This is a briefing item, questions of Mr. Queasley. Would it be of any value to move this to action?
That would, because we would like to put up that signage as soon as possible.
Move action. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great discussion. Okay. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independence, Good District 535, does hereby agree to approve the advertisement agreements between Rochester Public Schools and Rocket Restaurant Group and Black's Automotive Service.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks, Mr. Queasley. Seven point three two zero three, seven point zero three, bell time study informational item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, and several members of his team. This group has been working for several months. We organized this group after we realized that we could not afford the, the option of putting secondary students on city buses. So we got a group together to say, what, what other things could we look at to try to, uh, make a change to start times for our secondary students? Tonight, they are going to present, uh, the two options that they've been looking at. Our, we're not seeking approval of any of the options tonight, we're just looking for, uh, feedback and, and what our next step is. My thought would be that we would do a, uh, community meeting where we invite parents in and we'd present the options and give them an opportunity to provide us some feedback on both options. And then we also talked about doing a thought exchange on this same topic to, uh, get input on that. And then based from the results from the impact, we would come back to you with a recommendation. In talking to Jeff, he thinks if we can get this done within the next couple of months, we could get this in place for next school year. So, uh, but we have a wide, you'll see, we have a wide range of people and this is not all of the members that have been part of the group, but we tried to cover all the bases. Because not only when you make adjustments to the school time, it impacts things that happen after school as well. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Scott.
Thank you Superintendent. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's a tradition for those of you that don't break into the. I'm here to brief you on the, uh, the bell time study committee. A quick little background, if you remember on February fifth of twenty nineteen, uh, we went through the transportation contract and at that time you approved a five-year term of transportation without converting to a single tier option for the two to five years. And so at that time, you also tasked us with, uh, creating a bell timed, or a, a committee that would look into the start times of the schools to see if there was anything we could do to, uh, continue on with the two-tier process, you had to adjust the start time to have a later start time. You were a little off put by the six million dollars that was going to cost for the single-tier option, which I understand completely. And so during our, uh, discussions and process, we kept that in mind, that we wanted to keep, find an option that, uh, was more reasonable per se, uh, cost-wise, that might be more acceptable. And also potentially find an option that, uh, had relatively minor cost as well. So we began meeting at the end of February. Uh, we created the committee like the superintendent, uh, mentioned of, uh, I might as well use the PowerPoint here. Uh, we had a, quite a collective group and I apologize for Nate having to sit in the back, but Nate was from SAC and I don't think he's shy, that's why he's sitting there. He just, uh, chose to sit back there. But this isn't the entire committee. Like I said, there were fifteen of us, uh, that met on a regular basis for seven times over nine months. Even though we only met for an hour and a half or so for our meetings, they were, they were also tasked with, uh, reviewing research, contacting their peers, working with their peers, particularly the principals that are on the, on the table here, that were working with, uh, their fellow principals in their respective, uh, levels. And we'd come back and we, we do more research, more discussion. We had some very lively discussions, uh, which I appreciated on a major basis because that's the only way you're really going to get, dive deep into the process where they felt free enough to express their opinions. They had their own, I wanted them to have their own biases based on their different levels because it was important for them to champion the cause for their particular levels. And, uh, and so we went through that process and it was a fantastic group of people that are on this, uh, committee, uh, wonderful to work with. Uh, that we also had some input from some other people as well. Carl, of course, is here with, uh, he's the contract person that, uh, tried to keep us in line because we had to pay attention to minutes and hours and contractual issues as well. And we had some other help as well. So well, the first thing we did when we started off, uh, Jeff was able to gather a bunch of information from a, a variety of other school districts that comparable in size and, uh, they're highlighted here. Uh, we saw a wide variety of, uh, start times, uh, at the bottom there, you'll notice St. Paul, uh, their elementary, some of them start at seven thirty in the morning, other ones start at nine thirty in the morning, they kind of split half and half. Uh, their middle schools like, uh, that are on there at eight thirty, some of their high schools were seven thirty, some were eight thirty. Now, we're a unique, uh, school district where we are because we have a lot of rule. Students in our district, along with the urban setting as well. And, uh, if you look at St. Paul, they, they don't necessarily have that based on where their school district is located or some of these other school districts. So after that, we looked at a ton, we had a lot of medical research, there's a ton of it out there. Uh, you, you try to sift through it and, and to see what's, what works for us. A lot of them have a start time of about eight thirty, some of them have start times around eight o'clock to nine o'clock. And I highlighted some of them, this isn't necessarily all of them by any means, but this is some of the, uh, the research that we looked at. And then we started with transportation considerations. We had Jeff and John Gates from First Student who, who did a lot of work on this as well. Uh, Jeff and John, we have to have that one hour break in between tiers in, in order to keep cost neutral. If we, if we crunch that down less than an hour, then it's, it's going to start costing us because we're going to have to have more routes in order to make sure we get everybody to where they need to be on time. One of the parameters that we set, we wanted to try to have the pickup times and drop-off times during daylight hours. Now, that's problematic in the middle of winter in Minnesota. Uh, and daylight savings times also affects us as well. So we also looked at, uh, transportation, special ed, uh, and the IT transportation piece with all the vans. And, uh, as you know, the district also has to transport the private sect, or private students as well. We have not contacted them yet, does, yet? But, uh, obviously we, we need to contact them to allow them a, a bit of a voice in this, but we, we thought with these first steps that we'd get information back from you prior to making our next steps. Child care concerns, we were trying to be considered of the parents. If you're all through the drop-off pickup times, especially if they're drastic changes, then, uh, some of them, you know, rely on that SAC or, uh, their older siblings in order to, uh, watch over the younger children, whether in the morning or after school as well. And if you switch times around, that could directly affect them as well. We tried to keep all these, uh, in consideration. After-school activities, this is where Jeff Whitney comes along with, uh, the Activity Director. Uh, we do have a lot of middle school students that participate at the high school level. And if you switch the, the end time for the middle school where, uh, they get out later than the high school, that could directly affect practices because now if they're at, at a level where they're participating at a high school level, then the high school might have to wait for the middle school students to get there, could push practice times later. And then the biggest concern that I, I don't want to speak for Jeff, but the out-of-town events, uh, whenever you, the out-of-town events are set by the big nine and Jeff can describe this better than I can, but if you have an event starting at four thirty in Mankato, uh, what's the time, what time do you have to get out of school? And if you have a later end time to the day at the high school level, how does that directly affect, how much time is a student athlete going to be missing at the end of the day? Are there other considerations that can be taken into account here, whether you have an eighth hour, uh, open hour, all those types of things? And then if you get the middle school out, or the, the high school, middle school students out, uh, later than the elementary, sometimes you have coaches that come from those other schools that have to come and coach and how do we accommodate that? So those are some consider, considerations we took into effect. With SAC, uh, I already touched on that a little bit, but for instance, on like option two that you have in your board doc there, if the elementary students get out at two thirty and then they stay at SAC until six o'clock, that's a long time to stay at, at SAC, uh, where they're out of school. Or reverse that and they, they start now at nine forty on option one or nine thirty-five, then they're in SAC earlier in the morning and they're in, and they're already tired when they walk into school starting at nine forty. And again, the staffing concern because, uh, school-aged childcare relies a lot on the high school students to supply as employee, employees. And if they get out later than the elementary, how are they going to staff SAC in order to accommodate the elementary or, or the SAC program? So that's another consideration we took into effect. Sherri Knutson's here, she had some excellent insight into the student nutrition services piece. If we adjust times too much on the elementary level, if they start too late in the morning, then in order to accommodate a large elementary such as Gibbs that Michelle oversees, potentially the students are there an hour and then all of a sudden they're eating lunch already. Because you might have to have six lunches, uh, to accommodate the number of students that are in that, that school. If we adjust the, uh, the high school times, we reduce the, or the lunchtime for the high school level, where, right now I believe it's fifty minutes. If, uh, we reduce that down to forty minutes or thirty minutes, that puts more of a burden on student nutrition services because it reduces the amount of time the students have to go off campus to have lunch. And so that, that might increase the number that you have in the cafeteria, thereby you might need more staffing to accommodate those students that can't leave because you've reduced their time that they can be off campus. And then at, uh, Sherri commented that, I believe this is correct Sherri, that the federal guidelines mandate that you have to have fifteen-minute seat time eating. Is that correct Sherri? Thank you. So we have to find out a way to accommodate that as well. Uh, we took into account PSEO. You know, the PSEO students are on a different schedule, uh, when they attend out at RCTC. CTEC has their programming that relies on a, a stable schedule at the high school level. Early childhood learning centers, uh, they accommodate, they have to, may have to adjust their start times or end times as well and stagger times in order to accommodate any changes that we make in our schedule. And they might, early childhood might even need more support staff in order to accommodate the stagger time. Staffing hours, this is where Carl came in. We need to be in compliance with the contract. When we looked at option two, Carl reviewed that, he was able to, uh, look at it and Dan Coleman was available for us as well. There might potentially need to be some MOU or MOA put in place to accommodate that fifty-minute prep time for elementary. Uh, whether that can be split or not, we don't know, but, uh, because if we start the elementary at eight AM and you're going to require our elementary staff to be there at, uh, working as of seven-ten, that adds a whole new element to, uh, the contract or is it potentially a possibility to split it? Same thing at the middle school, high school levels, they're contractually mandated or allowed to, uh, certain number of minutes, times. And if we reduce lunchtimes, how do we accommodate that? How are the staff still allowed to, uh, accommodate that? So option one here is just, what we established was, well, what's the start time that we want to target? So we targeted eight o'clock in the morning. And we also said, okay, what's the end date that we can do based? And we also said, okay, what's the end date that we can do based on the after-school activities and all the after-school, or the daylights, the timeframe there to get everybody home? And we targeted at the high school, in order to accommodate that, if we start at high school at 8:00 a.m., right now they start at 7:40. If we started them at 8 and get them out at 3:10, we would have to reduce lunch periods by, or not lunch periods, but all periods by a few minutes in order to accommodate that. Lunches would run approximately from 10:45 to 1:20. Middle school, if they, we started them at 8 and they got out at 2:40, they'd have 30-minute lunches, they'd run from about 10:15 to 1:00. The day would be shortened by 10 minutes. That wasn't a contractual issue, if I remember right, that for some reason there was 10 minutes added to the element, or the middle school day, and Kim, you can explain that?
Well, it's to accommodate how many minutes they need to get the buses from the middle school and high school in between there to move, so that we would have to shorten the day by 10 minutes to not make more routes.
Okay. And then the elementary, if they, this option one, again, if they started at 9:20 or thereabouts to 3:40, you have that 20-minute lunch followed by a 20-minute recess, but the lunches would start about 11:15 to 1:20. Now, that depends on the size of the school, the smaller schools might be able to accommodate this a little easier than, than that. So the impacts, overall, it had minimal, minimal impact on the sped routes or after-school activities. Bus transportation appears to be neutral, but you never really know until you do it and dive into it. You're reducing the middle school day by 10 minutes, and the other impacts on there, about the elementary impact and SAC, but that 8:00 a.m. does satisfy some of the research, some of the research that supports that time, though some of the, there are a lot of research that supports a later start time of 8:30. Option two, this is a drastic change, where you'd have high schools starting at 8:45 and getting out at 3:15. Lunch would be reduced, actually, this is a little different. Eric came up with a pretty good proposal for the eight-period day, so that 44-minute lunch probably wouldn't be, I believe it's about 48-minute lunchtime actually in all, an eight-period day. Middle school, Kim came up with schedules for these, the lunchtimes seem pretty comparable. The elementary, Michelle came up with a schedule for this as well. This is a drastic change for the elementary, starting at 8:00 a.m. The early pickup on this, if I remember right, Jeff would be about 6:50, the earliest pickup for an elementary student, would be about 6:50 a.m. on that one. So that's one that we have to keep in mind. I apologize for this one being a little smaller, but this one would require an increase of bus routes. Jeff and John were anticipating about 10 routes. Our approximate cost is a little over $55,000 per route. Again, that's an estimate, and so a cost of about $550,000 per year in transportation cost increase. There would also be increases in the vans and the special ed routes, that's kind of hard to determine right now what it would be, but there would definitely be some increased costs there. The after-school activities, that's, we might have to extend at high school because the middle schools would be getting out later at an end time, so this practices would start later, like I mentioned. One of the biggest problems that regarding the transportation piece is the middle school would have to become the transfer site, and that can be a problem at a school such as Kellogg that has limited space, and John Adams particularly has limited space. We believe there's enough space at Willow to accommodate that transfer site, but these would be things we'd have to look into. And then again, that staffing concern that Nate mentions about the PM SAC, if the elementary gets out earlier than the high school and middle school. And then we have the contract issue with the 50 minutes. It's hard to determine what, now that the referendum has passed, the impact that that might have when we have more buildings, kids, the students are spread out more. It could be positive for us, and potentially three years from now, we could come back and look at this again, and it might be easier to determine. I don't know, or it could have a more of a negative impact. You know, we're going to have increased transportation costs when we build new schools, and so we don't really have an answer to that one. But the referendum may provide us an opportunity to expand the newcomer program to the north and south, and if we do that, then that reduces the transportation costs of having to transport all them, all the newcomers, students to one say, if we have them at multiple sites. The same applies to the highly gifted, if the middle school, at the middle school, if we have them at all the middle schools, then it would reduce the transportation costs of having to transport them where they all go to Kellogg now, that would reduce the transportation costs. Sorry, I know I threw a lot of information at you, but I have the great panel here that can answer any questions specifically related to their, their field, and I'm going to defer to the questions to them and take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Director Admison.
Thanks for all your hard work. I saw a lot of bullet items that were listed considerations, which is another way of saying potential problems, which, because I know we can brainstorm and I know we can project, but which ones of those might be potentially insurmountable, or do we feel like they're all something that we could work with, maybe with some difficulty?
I'll defer to the group on.
What worries you the most, I guess is another way to say that question.
We did, we did find that when you tweak one little thing, the trickle-down effect affects every, everything else, and we learned that rather quickly. And the mutual respect that we all had to each, for each other during the discussion processes was really, really neat, but like I said, they each had, I wanted them to have their own biases, so here's your opportunity to present to the school board. What's your biggest consideration or that you thought was difficult to overcome?
This is out of my area because I represented middle school, but I was concerned about little kids, kindergartners, getting on the bus at 6:50 in the morning in the dark.
And at that time as well, if you've ever been by Falwell on Sixth Street and where the shift is happening at St. Mary's, we have adult crossing guards and kids walking to school there, so that, that earlier time is, is kind of scary for, for the elementaries.
I'd have to say for me, the flip side of that with the elementary starting so much later, that amount of time that they're at SAC from 6:30 possibly until 9:30, that's three hours for a five-year-old to be in a school building without any really learning happening, and then when they go to class, they're tired, you know, starting their day are almost tired already. So to extend it, you know, an elementary school starting later, that is, I would say, my biggest concern. You know, you're going to have that amount of time anyway, so do you put it the three hours before school or the three hours after school? And a lot of our kids, you know, Nate, hey, you speak to this a little bit too, are picked up much before 6, you know, SAC runs until 6, but definitely not all of our kids are there by 6, or until 6, but 6:30, it's between 6:30 and 7, there's a lot of kids there. And I've been track, starting to track data on discipline and kids with, you know, especially our kindergarten, first graders that are having more struggles in the classroom, a number of them are in SAC.
Okay, we'll work our way around the table. Director Workman or Seiling Group?
Yeah, I had, I guess in your presentation, thank you, it was very detailed. I noticed in, let me find it, on the PowerPoint, slide three, four, slide four, start times of comparable districts. It would have been helpful to know what their end times were. We have all the start times, we don't know when they end, I mean, does Anoka, when does Anoka end, when, you know, all of these, and it would also have been helpful maybe to see some sample schedules that other, other schools do where they have the later start time. I have to give some big thanks to my colleague near the end of the table, Mr. Schlusner. He sort of had a discussion on Facebook asking for input from people on, you know, when does your school start, when does it end, when, just kind of, not in any kind of scientific manner to gather some data, but one of the things he had up there was Edina, and I remember that Edina started their high school later, I don't know, 25 or 30 years ago, so they've been doing this for a long time. And pulling their schedule up, not getting into the odd days and the even days, which is a sort of a one day of, two, two days of block type scheduling, their seven-period day resembles more what we had when I was teaching at John Marshall, seven periods plus lunch. So they start at 8:30 and end at 3:16, they have 49-minute class periods, 33-minute lunch periods, which you all have addressed to a certain point. I know there might be more kids who have to stay on campus rather than driving their cars all over town and doing who knows what, so that would certainly be a consideration for, for serving lunch. But I'm, I would be really interested in taking a look at some of the, maybe some of the other possibilities, you know, like I said, we don't, I don't know when these schools ended, and I don't see schedules for them to see how they work between the beginning and the end of the school day. Maybe you all did, but it would be, I would find it helpful to have that information. So I do have some more questions, but I'll defer to.
Yeah, and so as the board, can we maybe agree to, as we perhaps frame what we would maybe like to see, let's try to gain some concurrence of other board members to make sure that we're not inundating of this committee with seven times however many individual requests we may have. So the thought again being, as we maybe come up with ideas, we'll take the time to say, are there other board members that support that idea, and then we'll, they'll know, oh, that's something we should respond to. Fair enough? I believe so. Director Seiling Group?
Thank you for your work on this, we know it's, it's been long in coming, and I appreciate the, the list of considerations, which are a number of different things. I am going to go high-level process because that's where I like to sit, and so my understanding, and I will look to the superintendent, is that you are coming forward with two proposals that will likely go out into the world for some feedback for us. And so I would caution my colleagues that we don't want to ask too many questions that are going to make work with quotations before we get some feedback back, because we don't want to, because to me, we won't be making decisions, say, on real specific class length, lunch schedules, lunch periods until later date, at least that is my understanding. When I look at the list of considerations and I look at taking this to the public, and I'm just me, I'm thinking, what are parents going to react to? Start time and end time? That's, maybe I'm wrong. Then they're going to think about time on the bus, and they're going to think about time in SAC, then they're going to think, what time is my kid eating lunch? Then they're going to think about athletics, then maybe some sped issues if you've got a sped kid, and then actual time in class. And so I, I, I believe, my opinion, is that the board is going to have to get really savvy in thinking about how we want to consider any feedback that we get, because if it is important to us to have certain end times at X amount of time, is it important to us to have class length at a certain time? Is it important for us to have our activities kids not miss seventh hour? We're going to have to really think about that. And I come back to thinking about, I've lost my thought, but, my question is, is there, at this point, have you done any research, Ms. Schranz? For instance, on something like a district that might start earlier and the kids are in SAC, you know, are there programming options, are there things, you know, best practices, what to do with those kids? I'm guessing you haven't, because we don't even know if that's what we want to do yet, right?
Yep, yep, and I have not.
So I'm thinking that that would be a down the, down-the-line thing, like, it's a consideration, but maybe there's a solution out there.
For sure.
For pretty much any of the.
Continuing, Director Marvin.
Thank you, I've got a question and a couple of comments, and the question is, why is middle school a half an hour shorter than high school?
I think she's looking at you, Carl.
Yeah.
I could not answer that, that predates me.
Oh, so you're looking at me like I'm that much older?
I believe it was based on the tiered busing.
Yes.
On the what?
Tiered busing.
Yeah, that's what it explained to me, really had come down to transportation.
Okay.
It was pre-Jeff.
So that's the thing, and then, and then elementary is a half an hour shorter than middle school, but in terms of teacher contracts, I mean, that would be kind of flexible, that teachers work the same number of hours, it's just how much time kids are there. So hypothetically, we could have middle school or elementary school kids at school more, and we could have high school kids there less?
Contract day is seven hours and 45 minutes, and most of these actually shorten the contract day, so there's very little impact from the contract perspective. Like Scott pointed out, the one option for elementary would have that 50 minutes of, it's not called prep time, but it's referred to as planning time before the school day, which we talked to REA about, that might be an easy fix, or maybe teachers do report at 7:10. But again, most of these are shortening the day, and it's not impacting the length, it meets the at least half-hour lunch requirements, there's, there's very minimal impact as far as the contract goes on any of these.
Okay, I was just thinking about having students there longer, and I'm not sure what that would do, I mean, teachers have to be at the building, as you said, that many minutes anyway, so that's just something. My two comments, one is that, from my perspective at least, and thank you for doing this, I mean, we've been doing this for a couple of decades and haven't come up with anything, so thank you. Starting the school day at 8 o'clock, isn't a big enough change for high school kids? My perspective, to make that much of a difference, you know, if it's just 20 minutes later, I'm thinking we just stay put with what we have. I mean, it's something, but I don't know that it's enough. And then the other comment is, I'm wondering if there's, I know that there are things we can do during the school day, like block classes, for instance, every other day schedules, that might make the teaching, the learning, where the kids are at lunches, all that type of thing, work. But I, mainly, I think that 8 o'clock isn't enough of a change to make it worthwhile. 8:30 is good.
And here's the pleasure of going later in the sec, as here I get to reiterate what Deborah and Jean said. Completely agree, 8 o'clock, no point, really. 20 minutes isn't going to make that much of a difference academically to a student. And I think it is interesting, listening to all of your major concerns, of, it kind of boiled down to academic performance of the elementary student. I guess I'd have to ask, as I've read my fair share of academic performance of high school students, are there any studies for elementary students with some of these considerations? Or are these just concerns that we have from parents? I, I think that would actually be really useful to find out if the CDC and all the other great places that do these studies have looked at the entire K-12 system versus just secondary education. As far as the key points, this is, I would truly agree with Deborah down there, the report thinks that people are going to be looking at in the end.
Director Nathan.
Another thank you for all of your work, this has been a lot, a lot of synthesis. What are, what are the current period lengths in high school and the lunch lengths in elementary, middle and high school to compare to in your options?
The high school, we're currently 51 minutes. And if you look at option one, we dropped to 50 minutes. And option two, we dropped to 44, which doesn't seem, six, seven minutes might not seem like a lot, but over the course of eight periods over 180 days, it adds up.
Okay. And what about the lunch length currently?
High school's 50 minutes.
Yeah, it's the same, but high school.
Okay. And elementary and middle?
Elementary stayed the same with either option.
Okay.
Element, our middle school is 30-minute lunch, which is in the contract right now as the minimum time that we can have teachers have a lunch. The contract says it's the same as what the students have, or 30-minute minimum. And then our periods at the high school or at the middle school differ among Among the middle schools, just a few minutes, so they're like forty-six to forty-nine minutes. Some people have changed their passing time, or things like that, that have impacted that.
And the elementary, just to be, it's twenty minutes for lunch and twenty minutes for breakfast. I said it stays the same, but that may not mean a lot.
Right. Not everybody knows that, right? So, Eric, what are, you talked about the difference in the, the number of periods. What are, what are teachers saying about dropping six minutes a period, as far as the academic impact?
We've had a lot of conversations with teachers about this so far, but the teachers that I have talked to, they, they understand that we would really, really have to focus on teaching bell-to-bell. Not that we're not doing that now, but the importance of that would be extremely paramount. I, I think as we have more conversations about that, that will add up. I, I spoke with all the high school principals about that, and that was their number-one concern.
And we talked about the, the impact on athletics. Are the Big Nine high schools ending around the same time we are currently?
A lot of them are very close, and I think the key, when you look at them, is which schools you're talking about. For instance, if you talk about Winona and Mankato, their ending time is crucial, because their trips, you know, from Mankato to Winona is close to a two-hour, fifteen-minute trip, where we're kind of centrally located. So, when we adjust our times a little bit one way or the other, four or five of our trips are forty-five-minute trips, Red Wing, Austin, Oatana, Winona. Two or three of them are about an hour, Albert Lee, Norfield, Faribault. And then, we've got the long one, the hour and a half to the two Mankato schools. So, us adjusting a little bit one way or the other doesn't affect us a lot, but right now, we're almost in the perfect zone. Three-O-three is almost the perfect zone, because we don't have to get them out of school at all when we go to Austin, Albert Lee, Oatana, Red Wing, all those forty-five-minute trips. We go to three-ten, now you get, we're, the departure time is right in the middle of when everybody's dismissing from high school. So, you either got to get out of there before the, all the buses are loading, or you got to wait until after, so you don't get trapped in there, and then you might not have enough time to get to that forty-five-minute trip. And if you go to the, the latest time, option two, that's where you'll probably have every trip, so even a forty-five-minute or, to an Austin or an Albert Lee, they'd get out of school at some point. Maybe fifteen minutes in the last hour of the day, eighth hour. The hour trips, they might get out, you know, two-thirds of that last hour, but going to Mankato, or going to the metro area for a non-conference game, they're probably going to miss most of eighth hour. The sports, there's many of them that start in the spring and the fall at four-thirty, like the tennis, golf even starts earlier, but those are probably impacted a little bit more than the five o'clock starts, where like baseball and softball and all of those. Winter, the, probably the least impact from sport to sport. Basketball has some levels that start at like four-forty-five, because they have so many levels. B-Squad, JV, nine, varsity, they have four or five levels. But a lot of the two-level sports, the wrestling, the hockey, they start at, you know, five-thirty, six o'clock, so you don't get much dismissal time there. So, kind of spreads the gamut. You're, just depends on which sport, fall, spring, but the, definitely option two would be the most intrusive when it comes to, you know, kids having to manage that last hour of the day. And, and then the, the flipping of the middle school, too. That middle school group, we've had a large influx, because of no middle school activities, we've had a large influx of middle school kids playing high school athletics. So, we have a large number of seventh and eighth graders running track, seventh and eighth graders running cross-country, those sports where there's no cuts, where kids can come out, we have unlimited participation. And a lot of those kids probably, I would bet, it's in the fall and the spring where track and, there's probably a hundred and fifty of them from each middle school that are trekking over to Mayo High to run track in the spring, or run, you know, cross-country. So, those kids, if in option two, would be getting out even later, you know? So, that, if, if we were taking them with us on a trip, they would be missing that last hour, definitely, not knowing exactly what that middle school trip would be. So, the, yeah, it just depends on kind of where you fall. But I think like Mankato, I know Mankato ends right about three o'clock as well. They're all right in that, you know, that three o'clock area.
One more. What is the earliest pickup time for elementary school students now?
About seven-fifty-five.
So, you had mentioned it might, could be as early as six-fifty.
So, that's an hour and five time?
Okay, and we'll do a quick, once around again.
With respect, you announced that we were going around the table after you had already moved on from me, so I still had more questions.
Well, we're doing a second round now, so we're starting with you. Go ahead. Whichever you prefer.
Thank you. So, I noticed that even though we were moving some of the schedules back by forty, the proposed schedules back by forty-five-minute start time, we seemed to not want to adjust that end time much past the, the three-O-three for high schools. So, the latest proposal was three-fifteen. Is that primarily sports-driven, that, that the committee decided on a hard ending time of three-fifteen? Why wouldn't we, if we move the start time back forty-five, why wouldn't we also move the end time back forty-five?
If I remember the discussion, sports played into it, but it was really about when did we get the kids off the buses, and how late that was, and in the winter? They'll all be getting off in the dark.
Okay, that's, that's a good point. Because I was just thinking, you know, with the sports challenge, which, you know, I respect that's very intricate and affects a lot of kids, we all have teenagers, and it's all the same research, whether the kids live in Rochester, Norfield, or what. Is it a crazy idea to talk to the other schools and find out whether they're thinking about the same thing for us, and then that would change the whole system? For the Big Nine Conference, if, you know, perhaps they're all grappling with the same thing that we are. And, I don't know, crazy idea, and certainly not your responsibility, but I would volunteer to reach out to all of the school boards and find out if they're looking at the same thing. Just crazy idea. But, but, I'm hearing you say that the, the scary part is the kids getting off the buses pretty late.
Yes, because as we push the high school and middle school back, we push the elementary back, and then you have the little kids, or you move them forward. We, that, we, our major concern was kids getting off the buses in the dark, wasn't that? Was I right? Or on the bus. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Getting on in the.
When we pushed the elementary, that was the problem, that they get on the bus in the dark.
Right, but what about the, the end time, though? So, if the, if the high school's getting out at three-forty-five, that wouldn't change the elementary?
Nope.
Getting out the bus time? So, and, and back to the question, it's primarily sports, that's why we're afraid to go past three-fifteen?
I'll defer to Jeff on this, but if you move the high school later than the elementary, you're losing that hour in between the two tiers?
The afternoons are tighter now, anyway. It takes more bus routes to do the PM. So, you know, and a part of the reason of the cost, as we're tightening up, you know, on option two, we've only got, you know, three-fifteen to three-thirty-five, where we got almost a half an hour now. So, you're, you're going to eat up some more buses to get those kids home and back again, you know? And again, two-twenty-five, because right now, you know, we have a, a two-thirty, a three-O-three, and a three-thirty-five. So, you're looking at two-twenty-five for elementary, three-fifteen and three-thirty-five. So, you're really, you're crunching those times in the afternoon down, it's going to take some, some more equipment, so. And then, there's a consideration, you know, we, we, some schools run after-school academy programs at the elementaries, just trying to fit all that in, too, so. Speak, speak to the athletic piece of moving back to three-forty-five. You'd have the same issues, obviously, they'd be missing even more class, but the, some of the other issues you run in, you just okay the hockey practice times? We practice hockey during the last hour of the day. Would they get out of eighth hour study hall, a number of the teams do, have an open period eighth hour? And we would, we would not have enough practice times with, like youth hockey would not give us the arenas later than we already have them. And we barely can get all of those teams into practice right now. So, that would, it would really, it would mess hockey up major to go to three-forty-five. I'm not even, I'd have to really put the pen to paper to figure out how, you'd have to get everybody out of school. And right now, we don't get everybody out of school. Some of the girls' teams practice a little bit later, but, and then the other thing is, when you push all of our practices back, so you push three-forty-five, all of the basketball doesn't start till four, so now the varsity doesn't practice till four, now that one goes to six. Now, the JV goes from six to eight, or eight-thirty. Now, you're telling all the, the elementary kids that are playing youth basketball, that use our gyms for community ed, for Amy's group that comes in, now they're all going to start at eight to ten o'clock for their practices, where now they can get in at a reasonable time to use our facilities after the high schools are done. So, that's another example of what Scott was saying, the domino effect. It may look great for us in some areas, but then all of a sudden, it tips the scale for another group at the end of the night. So, that's another thing to think of. It's not just, that's just not our high school athletics, but across the whole community, people that are using our facilities for wrestling practice after us, youth wrestling, youth basketball, et cetera, so.
So, it's kind of sports facility-driven?
It would be, that, sports facilities would be a definite twist if you went a lot later with the, you know, the dismissal time for high schools.
So, if we're going around, kind of expressing where we're at mentally with, is that what we're doing now? So, before I lose my last turn to talk?
Well, if I may, certainly, this is simply informational.
Sure.
At this point, this will not be our only opportunity to provide our thoughts, our concerns, our inquiries to this esteemed group. And really, as we see before us, while what we're saying is of great importance, the district and superintendent, perhaps you can reiterate the, the next step, as is provided within the board doc, what the plan is to do beyond this, or I can just read it directly, the district plans to hold a community meeting in the near future to gather feedback and suggestions from the community. So, it'll be after that occurs, I, shall I ask, what happens after that occurs?
Well, we'll, we'll bring back the results of the feedback, and, you know, there's going to be some positive and some negative. You know, just if you remember, a few years ago, when we had a big discussion about expanding to forty-five-fifteen, how that change impacted people's lives and how they reacted to that. So, I'm sure we'll get good end, there'll all be good feedback, but some may not like the options, and some will love them, but I think it's important that you, before you get to the point where you're really getting to a position where you might want to make a decision, you need to know what, what the stakeholders.
Absolutely. I was just thinking, it would be my turn to give my feedback, or should I go to the public feedback sessions for that?
Yeah, and I will, I do want to respond. I, I couldn't pull up the email on my iPad, for somebody didn't let me go back far enough, but we are, the Big Nine superintendents are, somebody shot out an email who's looking at, at start times, and the response, I don't remember every school, but the responses I've seen so far, we're the only one that was looking into it. But the superintendent that sent out the question, I think maybe their district is, as well. So, you wouldn't need to reach the board member, but I can tell you which schools are, are looking at it.
Maybe we can be a leader in that.
Yeah, nothing wrong with that.
So, my, my thoughts in terms of feedback would be primarily, if it, if it involved a drastic reduction of instructional time for kids, I, I would not be a big fan of that. But, you know, having a slightly shorter class period could be just as efficient if we have well-rested kids, so it would be very short. But, but reducing lunch time to what's feasible is okay with me, but reducing instructional time isn't great, which is why this is an interesting proposal that, that Julie was looking at, that would have staggered lunch times, but not reduce the class times.
We want to make sure you.
And, and I, thank you. And I really think that safety of the children is very important. Academics and getting enough sleep is important, but unless we had a plan for, like, more of the walking school bus types of things for kids in the early morning, I would, I would be very concerned about that. Thank you.
Director Worthing.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm looking at this list of committee members, and I realize that this is more at the district level, but I would be really interested in hearing from the teachers who are working with their current schedules, and what, how this might affect their instruction. I mean, I talked to first-hour teachers, you have to, you've probably talked first-hour, Jean, where the kids are, they're not awake. And the point was made that, once they're well-rested, that losing a few minutes off their class periods might not make a whole lot of differences to their actual learning. I don't know if there's any studies on that, that you would just love to delve into, I'm sure, because you've got lots of time to do this, and I, I really do appreciate all the work that you've put into it. But, you know, I see this list of committee members, and I would really like, as we go forward to some of the details, to really get a lot of feedback from our staff, because they're the ones who are going to have to work with the schedule. That's the first thing. The second thing is, when I first came to the district a while ago, high schools did start at eight o'clock, and we had the split lunch, which was always kind of a misnomer, because lunch wasn't split, the class was split, where you had fourth hour with three different lunch times. You either had lunch first for roughly thirty, thirty-five minutes, and then you had your class, or you had half of your class and lunch, and then the other half of your class, which, that was problematic, or you had your, your class first, followed by your lunch. But I think it's, it's certainly worth looking at some of these things, and, once again, I, I just, you know, we really need to have some input from staff members. Obviously, when you have a split period like that, you're not going to be having physical education, you're probably not going to have science labs, you're probably not going to have your music groups with lunch in the middle. And, and I know there was a difficulty in teaching that, but certainly, there are a lot of opportunities out there for people, you know, for, as we move forward, for delving into some of these specifics. But like Deborah said, you know, the big thing's the start and the end time for, for parents is what's going to be. Yep, kids waiting in the dark for the bus at six-fifty, you know, parents might actually be able to wait out there with them, because maybe they don't have to be to work until eight o'clock. I mean, you know, that's kind of a novel idea, I know, but, you know, just to, as we move forward into these discussions, to delve into the pros and the cons, and, you know, what people might see as a disadvantage might not necessarily be that. So, I'm, I'll have to wait.
Director, you're still here.
This is probably a universal statement, but, you know, I want to do what's best for kids. And I feel like we, you know, the research is clear, our kids need more sleep. I have a seventeen-year-old that I have to use dynamite to get out of bed every morning, and it is not, it's, it's not good for any of us, it's not good for our family. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm really, I really want to be thoughtful in my considerations about all the stuff, that's very real stuff, but can we overcome? And I don't want to be, I don't want to approach this as a limiting thing, because I really, you know, personally, I believe a later start time for our high school kids would show us tremendous benefits in terms of performance and awareness and activity, and yada, yada, yada. And so, I really want to approach this, and I, and I think you have, but I will challenge all of us to approach this in a, in a. Who was I sitting next to today? Who said the, oh, it was a different meeting. It wasn't you. That we don't start with a deficit mindset, right? Like, we, we start with a strength, right? So, okay, here's the issue, what are, what are ways to solve this? And I think, you know, back to listening to our equity specialists, we have tremendous talent, opportunity, brain power in this district, and we could be a leader, we could get it figured out. And so, I'm, I'm very excited to have this conversation. Thank you.
Director Marvin.
Thank you. I think that, you know, you have a couple of good models for people to work from, and as you know, when you go into a group, I, I think going to the parents in the community is, is absolutely a great next step. Here, here are two solid suggestions, so people aren't sitting there just making things up, you know? They can say, this is what works, this is what doesn't work for this one. See what they say. I, I think that we need to have the conversation about how the schedule with each one would work later. It could be block schedule, every. It could be block schedule, every, you know, A-B schedule, whatever. That's a discussion for later on, how do we do lunches? That's another discussion. I absolutely agree, start time and time is critically important. And there may be somebody out there who will look at this and say, well, you know, you could work this if you just do that. When we had the split lunch thing that Ms. Workman was talking about, it was driving everybody crazy and it took a Spanish teacher to say, I think it was at that time we had a seven-hour, seven-period day, he said, just go to an eight-period day. Done. There was maybe more to it than that, but I do remember that that was, it was his idea to just sort of fix things. So thanks for this, good models, and I think the feedback's going to be really important.
Director Schlesner?
I guess to reiterate what a lot of folks said, I guess I would challenge to find an eight-thirty-ish time, because I really don't think eight o'clock is enough. And there are districts out there doing that, you know, like we pointed out, you know, yes, they have a smaller geographical footprint than RPS has, but there are models out there. And it's kind of my day job, is dealing with complex systems. You look at your real limiting factors, everything else will get worked out. Yes, they're all valid concerns, but at the end of the day, it's the student academics that are utmost important, at least for myself. And everything else, yes, it's important too, but at the end of the day, we're here and charged with educating our students. And unless they're well-rested, that's, we're not doing them any justice and having times that start too early. And I look forward to the discussion with the public and seeing the thought exchange results and hopefully seeing you all again in four to six to eight weeks. Thanks for all your work. It's hard stuff.
Director Nathan?
I'm going to build on what Director Workman said about reaching out for the teachers. I think it would be good to target parent-specific focus groups, groups, I don't want to say mix, but keep the topics with the specific people you're reaching out to. Talk to teachers with teachers, talk to parents with parents, because I think those conversations can build on each other, because they have common experiences. And I don't know if this is even possible, but where are our kids being taken care of before school and after school that isn't SAC out in the community? We may get some really good feedback if we reach out to those childcare providers, because they may tell us, we already have a deficit of childcare availability in the community we're hearing. So we may really need to hear from that sector of provider, because we're saying, well, somebody's going to have to take care of the kids. Well, we should really talk to them to find out what that impact might be. And we, you've done a great job talking about the research being important. The community may not know that research as well as you do or as well as we do, so as we present this information to the community, we may have to give them a little bit more about what the research says about later start times. There may still be people who don't believe it. So I would also be interested maybe in having John Marshall share some of the experience of their impact of Rocket Hour, what it has meant for some of the kids not getting to that really hard academic work early, and maybe delaying that later in the day, that might help to kind of sell the message of later start time for that academic work. It's not just being at school, it's what they're doing when they get there. And then the last thing is, and any of this talk that you've, the research you've done on later start times, and this would apply to the eight forty-five, has anybody talked about doing practices in the morning? Or do they do that? Is that just, is that a thing or not?
Well, it's a great point. You obviously could flip them, but then you're, we talked about that, it's kind of self-defeating in the forty percent of your student body. We have about forty percent of every school during the season, fall, winter, spring, so forty percent of them, plus maybe if you, and that's not, that's not plays and drama and, you know, some of the other things, debate, speech, I'm just talking about athletics, would then be getting up early to go to practice. So it, yeah, you definitely would, you know, open up a different time of the day to do certain things, but you'd have some of those kids maybe even getting up earlier than they do now to go to those activities.
Are there any sports that practice in the morning now?
There are a handful of them, like swimming will go two a days for a while, when, early in the season to get more yardage in when they're swimming in the, you know, early season. So they'll do a morning workout and afternoon workout, but probably not too many. Youth hockey used to do a lot of five thirty a.m. practices with little kids dragging them out of bed at five thirty in the morning to go to the arena. But not at the high school level, we don't have a ton of them going early. And obviously, we're starting at seven thirty now, so if you're going to go early, you're getting them out of bed pretty early to go to practice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess, just a couple of clear, hopefully you learned tonight that there's not going to be a perfect solution, it's not going to have some kind of impact somewhere or the other. The other thing is, and I wasn't very clear, when I said stakeholders, stakeholders are not just parents and community, they're our staff. So they will have an opportunity to fill out the thought exchange, they will have an opportunity to come to the open meeting. And my plan was to, I'm drawing a blank on his name, but there's a physician from Mayo that I talked to a couple of years ago. The plan is to have him come and present the research, and then we pitch, set up the stage on why we're even looking at changing, and then go over the different options that we have.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So we're doing a thought exchange and having a live Q and A? So it's best of both worlds, right?
Yeah, because some people may not like to get on technology, that they can come in person, and we're getting pretty good at live streaming in-person meetings too, so we could do that.
I like that. That'd be great. Don, I didn't hear your thoughts. We were too busy chairing the meeting.
I was too busy sharing the meeting. But thank you for your time, your effort, a lot of great information. Obviously, it's given us a lot to think about. I look forward to hearing from the stakeholders. I do have one clarifying question of Carl. I thought I'd heard you mention that you had part of your responsibility, you had already been in discussions with REA, Dan Coleman in particular, in terms of, not necessarily then the bell times in its entirety, but ask one of the stakeholders, you've already been in communication with them, is that correct?
Yeah, we invited him to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Scott, excellent job.
Thank you.
Could I ask one clarifying question?
No.
I appreciate all the input. One of the limiting factors that we looked at was the costs, and I know that's the elephant in the room. And if some feedback from you is, I know you can't tell us for sure, but a half million dollars a year, is that too much, not enough? Is, well, I mean, I know that you, six million was too much, but we could drop schedules if we can find enough bus drivers and buses and make it all work to what's acceptable from all your concerns. But it just depends how much you're willing to accept the financial piece of it. And I just wanted to make that comment. We're trying to work, balance all that in addition. And I appreciate the fact that now you mentioned the cost, because that seems to tell me that's not really a factor in soul.
It kind of is.
Well, okay, but thank you.
It's a factor.
It's a factor, okay, thank you, fair enough.
It's not, that cost is, I do not think is insurmountable. Six million, yeah.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point zero five acceptance of canvas of votes cast in the November fifth, twenty nineteen special election. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Oh, you're good. Wait. Yeah. Before I turn it over to the official agenda item on the referendum John's going to cover, but just a couple of things. First of all, I want to, I did this that night when I talked to the three media stations, but I want to thank the, first, the community for supporting Rochester Public Schools and supporting our students for passing a historical bonding referendum, the largest in history, and I think we think it's either the second or third largest in the state of Minnesota this year. So we want to thank them for that. I also want to thank the board for being willing to put that number out there, because it was a big number and it took a lot of courage to ask our community to support us for that large amount. We had some good things in our favor that helped as far as the tax impact, but it does take a lot of courage from a board to say, hey, we're going to go out and ask the voters for over a hundred and eighty million dollars, so we want to thank you for that. Want to thank the Vote Yes group, they did a lot of work to get out and encourage people to support the referendum. I want to thank, they're not here, but our two consultants that we worked with, with Kevin from LHB and Jason from CRW, they went beyond what the contract that we had with them, put a lot of time in, and they're still working with us on a few other little issues that we're working through, so want to thank them for their time. I know I'm going to, I know when you start thanking people, you're going to forget somebody, so I'll just say right now, if I forgot anybody, we thank you. But I also want to thank the cabinet. All of them were involved, we had, I think it was weekly or every other week, we met with our consultants to go over things and talk about things. And then a special thank you to John and Scott and Heather for, and helping me going out and make presentations. And later on, I'm going to share some slides that shows you a lot of work that you're probably not aware of that went into the passing of this referendum. And then I do want to thank, a special thanks to John and his team. We had over twenty-two hundred people come through his office to vote early, and they didn't get to stop doing their other work to deal with that. They had to continue their work, but also accommodate the over two thousand people that came and voted early. I know it was a lot of stress and work on his department. And add to that, John, you know, somebody had to set up all the polling places and get all the volunteers to work. And that, I've learned that that's not, oh, I'm done, because two days later, you have ten people canceled, so then you got to find ten more people. So I know there was a lot of work done on John's part to get the physical part of the referendum organized and ready to go, so people can vote. And then Heather and... We couldn't have done it without her. Somebody had to answer all the questions. Somebody had to do all the stuff out on social media, and she did that. And I know there's times that people have not appreciated her work, but I do. And, let's see, who else did I want to thank? I wanted to thank, there was one other person I had in my mind that I wanted to thank, but maybe it'll come to me later. So anyway, I wanted to thank everybody that, if I missed you, I thank you for what you did, because I've been involved in, you know, we did the operating in twenty fifteen, and I've been involved in a bonding one when I was building administrator, but never won this large amount in when you're going to build four schools and do all the other things. So there are just a lot of work that went into this, and I know a lot of stress put on people, but I do thank them for doing that. So I do want to share some information, I think it's really, I was blown away, because you're involved in it and you're just doing it, you don't really think about it, but we kind of put together some information that I wanted to share with you tonight. So this, one of the things I've heard out in the community is how transparent we were and how we kept people informed. And we started, if you remember, in March of twenty eighteen is when we agreed to, the superintendent, to organize a task force and to start looking at this, and what do we need to do to address our capacity issues that we were dealing with. If you remember, in April, that's when we said, hey, who's interested in helping us with this task force? And we had over two hundred people apply for that. We didn't believe that we could corral two hundred people and come to consensus on things, so we narrowed it down to thirty people. So in May of twenty eighteen, the district hired a consultant team from LHB and CRW to facilitate the work of the task force. And in July of twenty eighteen, the task force had their first meeting, July of twenty eighteen, not twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. And then July eighteen to January two thousand and nineteen is when all the task force met. And I can't thank the task force enough, they had to put a lot of time in, and not only come to meetings, but consider things and get feedback from people who they represented on the task force. So they put a lot of time in. We had three community-focused meetings where we allowed people to come in, and the task force said, here's what we're thinking, give us your input, and then they made adjustments based on the input. And then in February, we sent out an eight-page survey to fifty-seven thousand voters, done by School Perception. And if you remember, in March, the results were presented to you and the board landed on question one and question two, based on the results of that survey. And then August nineteen, we started targeting referendum marketing and communication. This is a little information about the task force, the different meetings, we had fourteen task force meetings, we had four Citizen Voice meetings, which they were also live-streamed, so if you couldn't come in person, you had an opportunity to hear and provide questions. I mentioned that the entire cabinet met, we had twenty-six meetings that we met as a group with our consultants. We had five presentations to the board, the task force presented every month to give you an update on where they were at and what they were thinking about. And then we came up with some different options. And then the final recommendation was given to the board February two thousand and nineteen. Here's the survey that I mentioned that we gave. Tell enough stories through presentations. If you total up our work and the Vote Yes, one hundred and thirty-one presentations or events were done by the four of us and some of you and the Vote Yes group. So you can see all the different ones that we did. From March two thousand and eighteen to November two thousand and nineteen, we were in the local media a hundred and three times. And a lot of that was due to Heather, working with media and making stuff available to them and pushing things out. This is just some of the samples that were out there. And then because of our relationship that we have with the Post Bulletin, I remember Heather and I went and met with the editing board and talked about the referendum, and they agreed to let us submit op-eds. So these are the dates that op-eds were presented and published on Saturdays and the various topics that were written about. Here's some of them. When we look at social media, we use Facebook to reach parents, to followers, we posted about the referendum, twenty-three stories, reached over a hundred and nine thousand users. We post on the facility task force work, we posted seven stories just on their work, which reached over twelve thousand people. And then the Citizen Voice meeting, we posted seven stories on that, reached almost, or a little over six thousand individuals. Here's a sample of some of those postings. We sponsored, which, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know what this really meant until Heather brought it to my attention, but you can sponsor stuff on Facebook ads. So we did that from September fifth through the twelfth, reaching over ten thousand people and generating twenty-one thousand impressions. Not sure what that means, but I think it means something good. I'm not a Facebook person, so I don't know. But we also created, I Voted Early, and I think some of you volunteered to come in and get your picture taken and allow us to do that. And we all had different individuals that we had to reach out to and encourage them to do that for us, to promote early voting. Lot of work on Twitter, we had ten tweets between September and November, over fourteen thousand impressions. Again, I don't know what that is, but it's a good thing. Some more social media, we had twenty-three videos posted between January two thousand and Some more social media, we had 23 videos posted between January 2018 and October 2019. And I recently found one that was done on October of 2018 that went to all staff and to all of our parents, and it was really clear, we talked about what we're going to do, what we're recommending for Fidel, what we're recommending about the middle school polls. It's really cool about is that that was when I had that weak moment, I was trying to grow my hair out, so I go, oh, so that's what I looked at back then. Anyway, I mean, that just shows you that we didn't wait until a couple of months before the vote to say, here's what we're thinking. October of 2018, all parents and all staff received a video that was really explaining that information. And then we did some superintendent phone calls, Election Day, Minnesota means polls open at 8 a.m., this is just what I, Heather wrote for me, and I had to say it into the phone, and we sent out a Sky Alert and encouraged people to vote. E-newsletters, staff newsletters, seven newsletters were emailed between February and November using Smore, which, another one of those things, I don't know, but it's a good thing. And we had over 23,000 views for that. Parent newsletters, we had six parent guardian newsletters were emailed between September and November using our Sky Alert, which is our school messenger, and we had mailing lists, over 19,000 email addresses per email. Okay, here's kind of a picture of some of what they look like. We did some, we had some great partners who were willing to give us some space. The Chamber, for example, posted a letter that was written by me, they put it in their newsletter, it goes out to every business that's part of the Chamber, and here's an example of other businesses that promoted the referendum, and some of them, like the Rochester Area Builders Association, publicly came out and they supported the referendum, so we were helped, thankful that the partners did that for us. And then direct mails, we purchased the Van Voter Activation Network file to strategically target residents that would be supportive of the public schools, and sent out information to them more than once to encourage them to go out and vote. Here's what those look like. And then this is just some of the work that the Vote Yes group did in their mailing, some of the things they sent out, and were, I just remembered, thanks to who Heather's really good at helping me remember things. The group I wanted to thank that I forgot was REA. I mean, REA and actually the State Teachers Association really were supportive of the Yes group and really helped them with their work. So this is kind of a sample of some of the things that they mailed out. Print pieces, we use a variety of print pieces for various audiences, list of all the different types of things, you probably, if you went to any of the fall outdoor activities, you saw some of our banners on the fences, but really just trying to get out there in front of people and letting them know what's going on. Here's some more paper pieces that went out. By the way, paper's my favorite, not that Smores and other stuff, but I don't know what aren't. Here's some of the graphics that Heather's department created. Website, we published a robust website in March of 2019, after our PS school board voted unanimously, we started pushing things out. This is a couple of pictures of some of the things that were put out there. And then here's some frequently asked questions. I'm sure you've all been to the website and saw all the different questions that were submitted and answered, and like I said earlier, Heather's the one that took all of those questions and answered them, and if there was something she needed help, she'd reach out to another cabinet member to get, help them, help her with that answer. Voting information was the top search and page view on our website. The district offered a direct link to property tax calculators so people could go in and see how it's going to impact them personally. The page was visited over 2,000 times, and 1,790 calculations were made from that link. The top page views of the referendum website from September 1st to September, November 8, 2019, you can, I don't know if you can read that up there, but we will load this on somewhere so you can see that. It is in Board docs, isn't it? Yes, so you should be able to see. More website information, I know it's getting late, so I'm not going to go over all of these, but here's voting by the numbers, we have 51 polling locations, which John had to organize and get all the workers. 399 election judges, 33 days of absentee early voting at Edison, and we had 2,501 early votes. I think in 2015, we had 900 and something early votes. And then running the election, a lot of work, and I think John's still having nightmares about all of that, but it does take, when you're the only thing on the ballot, you have to do everything, and John and his people really did a great job on that. Here's the results of the referendum, which you're all familiar with, and I do want to say, we're happy that the thing passed, and it's very rewarding, but I think we need to look beyond the referendum passing. In my opinion, when you have results of almost 70% for question one and 60% question two, what that tells me is that all of these people, everybody, teachers, administrators, paras, custodians, everybody in our system are doing good work. You don't get this kind of support from your community if they don't value and feel that you're doing a good job. So I highlighted all the people that were behind the scene and did all the work on the referendum, but the work that everybody does every day also contributed to these types of results, because I've been in communities where they don't think the school's doing a really good job, and they do not support referendums. But 70 and 60% tells me that we're doing some really good things, and people value the work that all of our staff do every day to meet the needs of our kids. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to John to do all the formal stuff that he has to do, and that means I got to do something here.
You can just leave it up.
Leave it up?
Yep, that's perfect.
Okay.
Well, good evening. Thank you for letting me finish it up here. The resolution... We also need to acknowledge Olmsted County staff, because they put in a lot of hours, but we contract with them, they have all the equipment, the vote tabulating machines, they took care of printing the ballot, they provided a lot of staff for running things on the day of elections, so they were very helpful, too. So the resolution you have before you, you need to canvass the results, and these numbers come right from those tabulating machines, the, like a little thumb drive holds all the results, plug them all into a computer, and that's what tabulated all the results, precinct by precinct. I guess I was just going to point out, on question one, we won in every precinct in the city of Rochester, so there was greater than 50% support in every polling location. Now, it was a little different in the smaller townships where there's, you know, a handful of voters, we lost on a few of them, but we were still able to carry the vast majority of votes to the positive that day. And question two was just a little bit different, where a few of the precincts in Rochester were not greater than 50% support, but that question still passed as well. We had 22% voter turnout, I was just looking back, when we last voted on a building bond for what became Gibbs Elementary, the turnout that day was 14%. And then when we did our last vote for the operating referendum, which is a different kind of money, that vote turnout was around 29%, so we were kind of right in the middle of those two votes. So I think I will turn it over, if somebody would need to make a motion to basically approve the resolutions that are attached there to certify the results of the election.
We need to move to action first?
Yes.
There you go.
So I just did that.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of moving to action?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bid resolved that the school board of independent school district number 535 of Rochester, Minnesota, that the special election held in and for the school district of, on November 5th, 2019, was in all respects duly and legally called and held. The returns thereof have been duly canvassed, and the votes cast at the special election for and against the question submitted to the electors were as follows. Question number one, yes, 11,760; no, 5,243. Question number two, 10,127; no, 6,857. Be it further resolved that the school district ballot question one received the approval of a majority of the votes cast is hereby declared to have carried, and be it further resolved that school district ballot question number two received the approval of a majority of the votes cast and is hereby declared to have carried, and be it further resolved that pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 205a, point 07, subdivision 3a, the clerk is hereby instructed to notify the commissioner of education of the results of the special election, and to provide the certified vote totals for each ballot question in written form within 15 days after the results have been certified by the board, and be it further resolved that the clerk is authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county to which the school district is located in whole or in part.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Seven point 06 approval of combined, I'm sorry?
Before we get off this, I think Mike had a chance to thank everybody, but I think we really do have to thank our superintendent, because I'm surprised you didn't lose your voice for all the speaking that you were doing and all the appearing that you were doing, and I was at a lot of the presentations that John, or Scott, or Heather, or Mike did, and having been through this process in 2015, I appreciate all the work that all of you did. We may have had the courage to take the vote, to put it on the ballot, but you were the ones driving the team of horses to the finish line, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
What Kathy said?
Seven point 06 approval of combined polling places briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, John's favorite topic, so we'll let him brief us on this agenda item.
All right, so here we go again on the next round of elections. This issue needs to be passed once a year now in every local government, just declaring that if there were to be a special election in the next year upcoming, where would you combine any of your polling places if you choose to do that? And so we've submitted this with a few changes over last year, based on what we learned in the last week, and based on numbers, have decided that there are some polling places that due to the low numbers of voters within those particular precincts, we're just recommending that these be combined if there were a special school district election on a day when there isn't already a general election. Now, we don't foresee this happening, because we don't need to rerun this referendum in 2020, so really, the only thing that could possibly happen is if there were a special school board election for a vacancy of a director if you chose to do that. So just a couple of things I wanted to point out, so in our townships, the reason we're combining those all together is that if you looked and you saw the results of the Salem township, there was one person who came out to vote. So imagine opening up a polling place and paying three election judges, renting the facility, possibly even renting a porta potty, because they don't all have heat and plumbing and all that, to serve that one voter. So it makes a lot of economical sense to combine some of these small townships and precincts together for the efficiency. So this would take us down from 51 polling locations to, I believe it'd be 47 if we were to have a special election.
Any discussion?
Oh, move to action.
Second.
Discussion.
Can I just ask, is there, is this a hurry, or can we let it sit so that if some of these townships wanted to weigh in on the potential solutions, they would be allowed to?
So there is a deadline, and I believe it's December 31, but I thought they moved it up a little bit this year to like December 3, so I think we're kind of catching it right in where we need to move it to action.
Would you anticipate any controversy or hard feelings from any of the people affected?
So I have talked to all of the clerks in these smaller townships when we did a last minute, when they notified us that, you know, it'd be better if we didn't have the election at their facility, and they are all agreeable that this makes a lot of sense for them to not have the facility open on a small election for just the school district.
All in favor of movement to action?
Aye.
It resolved that the school board of independent school district number 535 does hereby approve the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
I would, I would like to make the point that our discussion should occur now and not when we are voting to move something to approval, just a case in point. We didn't...
Yeah, we did.
We discussed about moving it to action.
It was obvious.
And then I said, any discussion? Did what, did you have some discussion?
Well, the discussion, no, I mean, you discussed about moving it to action, but generally, I mean, we need to make sure that we are only discussing moving it to action, because we do have the opportunity to, you know, bring in other items at this particular point. That's all.
Okay, thank you. The motion before is all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Are there any governance follow-up requirements before we move to adjourn for the evening? And perhaps we'll walk around the table, starting this time on my right, Director Nathan?
I have to remember to take notes on that, but I cannot remember anything outside of conversations that we had during individual agenda items, so not broad, no.
Do you know?
No.
Director Seelinger?
No.
Workman?
No.
Amundson? Meeting adjourned at 8:54 PM.